All right, I'll have to call to order the October 10th, 2018 meeting of the Southborough School Committee. As usual, we'll start with audience sharing, but unusually, we actually have something.
We do, we have a front row, our finest in blue here tonight. And over the weekend, Chief Paulus sent us Instagram or Facebook photo out of a very celebratory moment with Officer Aaron Richardson just being newly graduated, I guess, from his DARE program. As we talked about last year, we've expanded DARE into the middle school. It's been something that has been up the conversation for some time. And working in collaboration with the officer team, and certainly Keith, always mindful of opportunities for students in the middle school to grow academically and as good citizens, this was a great opportunity to move forward through that initiative everyone's familiar with, very familiar with, Officer Landry. And so, thought that this might be a way to celebrate not only your success and your addition to our school community, which has already been phenomenal, and the great work that Keith is doing up at Trotter, but also to thank Chief Paulus again for just being such a supporter, a great supporter of our schools, not only in this, but in so many other ways throughout the year. Kevin's just a regular, he comes and, you know, he shows up in the cruiser now, so like, "Hi, where's your office? Here's your coffee." So, we're happy that we've been able to afford with this program. And we've made three chairs here at the table if you want to come up and join us, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
If I may, I'd just like to speak quickly. I have a building committee meeting to attend, so I'll just say a few words and then I'll head over there. So, I know since I got here in 2014, we have had some discussions about expanding the DARE program. I think very important in this day and age to carry it over into the middle school community. And we're finally able to make that happen this year. And working with Superintendent Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Martino, we were able to find some funding. And also thanks to the town who has increased our staffing at the police station a bit in the last few years, so we're able to take an officer and have him have some added responsibilities over at the, in the DARE program. So, very proud to have Officer Richardson accept the position. I believe he's going to be taking over Kevin's old slot in fifth grade, and then Kevin will be expanding into the seventh grade curriculum. Just something also, we're just trying to expand slowly into our presence at the other schools on, at Woodward, we have a Wednesday program going on right now. We'll get a lot of different offices hopefully in there at least one day a week, and maybe we can expand that a little further into some of the other schools as we move on. Something I want to follow up on, you'll all see Officer Richardson, he's hugely popular in the community and he's a fantastic choice. He hasn't even taught a DARE class yet, and he set our record for likes on a Facebook post. I guess that means a lot, I'm like Bill Belichick, I'm a MySpace guy. But, that being said, you're going to really enjoy him. And I'll leave it over to them for a little more of an introduction. So, we not only wanted to introduce Aaron, I asked Kevin to come along with us this evening, and he had some family commitments, and I kind of insisted that he be here. And that was more to recognize, he has been the face of the police department in the schools and this community for 18 years?
18 years.
18 years. And he'll be remembered more than any of the department combined for, you know, everybody that grew up in Southborough and, you know, the last 18 years and moving forward. So, I would like to personally recognize him on behalf of the department and give him an applause. So, without further ado, I'm going to leave for my building committee meeting and turn it over to these officers, and maybe they can give you a little more information about the program. And thanks for having us.
Okay. But I'm sorry, I just want to say thank you very much for allowing us to come here. I have been teaching DARE now for 18 years, I've been a member of the Southborough Police Department for 20 years. And one of the first things I tell the kids on the very first day that I go in and meet them, is that I tell them how proud I am to be a DARE officer because I sat in the chair that they were sitting in when I grew up here in Southborough. So, I tell them I take tremendous pride in being able to come to a school I actually sat in, in the chairs where they are. So, I, hopefully that kind of helps them realize that, hey, there was a police officer that sat in the same chair I did back when I was in fifth grade, so it kind of gives them a little bit of connection there. Over the years, the DARE curriculum has changed probably about four times. Clearly, as teaching methods evolved, so has the DARE program. And I wanted to thank the principals here in town for allowing us to come into some pretty busy and jam-packed schedules. And you've always been very flexible to me and very accommodating to me. So, that's certainly something I appreciate from the superintendent's office on down. So, I will continue to, as I put it to the kids, I'll keep doing this until they tell me to stop. And now that I have a coworker with me getting on board, I just think, well, nothing but nice things in the future to happen. You're allowed to speak. I told him he can't speak until I tell him.
Kevin's been a great mentor of mine since I got here. A lot of the community police things that I do, I learned from him. I'm just very grateful to be selected for this role. It's a huge role. I was crammed in my head for the last two weeks that now I carry two badges, represent the DARE program, DARE America, and the town of Southborough as well. It wasn't an easy two weeks. It's probably the hardest training I've been to since the police academy. I think I called Kevin the first thing, I was like, "No, I think I'm upset with this." I don't think this is for me. But now I graduate the program, I can't see myself doing anything else. It was very hard, it was 45-minute presentations every day, two hours of homework on top of my hour and 40-minute drive home from Comfort, New Hampshire, and then getting up at 4:30 in the morning to go back. It's not easy. So, every DARE officer that is selected, they all care, and it's not something that's given. You don't just show up to the training and you graduate, you actually have to earn it. So, every police officer that you come in contact that is a DARE officer, they are very dedicated to the program. So, I know Kevin's been dedicated for 18 years, and I'm going to try to fill his big shoes, and you will get a dedicated DARE officer as well as a police officer I take very strongly in working in the schools. Kathleen has been absolutely amazing to me. She lets me come in once a week and have lunch with the kids and go to recess, and it's just been, it's been great. I think from a DARE program as well, I've become a better parent in the two weeks, I hope. So, I really appreciate it. I thanked Ms. Johnson yesterday, and I can't be more thankful to the rest of you for allowing me to be in this role. So, from the bottom of my heart sincerely, I thank you guys, and I thank Kevin for being such a great mentor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing about Officer Harrington? So, today Kevin came in as part of our lunch program, and I looked over and he had a group of students all around him, and I asked what he was doing. He was signing his business cards and handing them out as, like autographs to the students. At one point, a student says, "This is his number, I can call him." And I said, "Kevin, I don't think you want to be giving that out." I'm sure that that type of relationship will develop with you too, Officer Richardson. I also ought to recognize the efforts of Chief Paulus, who has been part of creating this lunch program at Woodward, and it's been nothing but successful in the first month that we started it. So, thank you.
I just want to say again, thank you. It's so much a part of our school readiness program, you know, instilling in students the importance of working together, and also, you know, just the phenomenal role models that you have for our students in building such a positive school culture, a culture of acceptance and safety. To Kevin, Officer Landry, you know, it's hard to believe it was seven years ago, but Kevin has played such a pivotal role in establishing, I guess, and participating in the very first chapter of our Alice work. He readily volunteered to go for training, which was not on anyone's, you know, schedule of to-dos for Officer Landry at the time, and really worked over and above in collaboration with North Row and the two chiefs at the time to establish our new safety protocols. And this was all above and beyond what he does as an officer in the community and also as a DARE officer. So, it's been, we appreciate everything. I'm sure you have an outstanding history with Officer Landry and a future as a DARE officer as well in our school. Welcome, we're glad to have you with us.
Big shoes and butt comment again.
And thanks again to the principals for being such a partner in getting these programs delivered to our students in such a positive way.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us tonight. We certainly do appreciate it.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for sticking with it for two weeks and getting it done. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to new business, and the first item is the Woodward School Improvement Plan.
This is Steve, this is Ramucci's first improver plan?
It is. He have updates last year with, in regards to the second year of the two-year plan, but this is the first plan that I've been a part of creating. So, as I came to Southborough, through many conversations I had with the school community, with our parent groups, with Superintendent Johnson and Assistant Superintendent Martino, and my colleagues here, what I kept hearing was, it's a supportive community, but you also need to get to know the community. So, that was a large part of my work last year, really building connections and creating relationships with all the different organizations that can lend support to the schools. In looking at how we would be moving as far as the building, what we started to focus on first was the mission statement. And that was really what was guiding our work. "It is the mission of the Woodward School to maximize academic achievement, social responsibility, and lifelong learning by attending to the intellectual and developmental needs of individual students in supportive classroom environments." Now, there's three key components to this that stood out to myself and staff in reviewing this, those being the academic achievement, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. So, those were kind of guiding themes as we worked towards creating our school improvement plan goals. But, you know, with any good, any good plan, you have to reflect back and look on the work that you've done in the past, and so that you can continue to build on those things. So, I just wanted to highlight some of the elements of the five goals that were part of the 2016-18 plan. The first being the communication and getting to know stakeholders and developing those partnerships early on. A lot of that work was done by my predecessor, but that was very important to me as I took on the role. One of the first things that I had done was surveyed stakeholders, started having principal coffees regularly, looking at topics such as curriculum, mathematical thinking, growth mindset, and reviewing MCAS, developing relationships with parents at an early stage in the year so that I could get a better sense of where they thought the direction, or what they would like to see the direction of the building move towards. I feel like it was very important to survey them as stakeholders. As far as communication, excuse me, curriculum instruction and assessment, we continued to develop our curriculum maps, continued the rollout of the second year of our Carolina Science units, and then started grade-level collaboration with more of a focus on data analysis. That was some of the professional development that I worked with staff on last year, working with our newly hired K-5 math curriculum coordinator, looking at student work and then determining how best to support them moving forward. We provided professional development to staff in the areas of science, mathematics, some social-emotional learning that took place early on in the air with work with Jessica Menahan. Goal four, looking at student support services. A major part of overall student performance is healthy body, healthy minds. So, we focused some of our energies on further developing programs like Wake Up and Workout, our Green Team Recycling Program with an emphasis on nutrition. We looked at creating a walking school bus that was pretty successful last year and, you know, continues to grow this year. The social-emotional learning was very important to us. Finally, goal five, looking at the 21st century learning and technology integration. There's a, you know, when we look at this, we think tech first, but it's also the idea of thinking critically, having, giving students tools so that they can work in collaborative groups, so that they can problem solve, and so that they can question things and develop better practices or ways of doing things in the future. We are very proud of a one-to-one tech integration device to students, and we'll be continuing to review and analyze those technology needs of our building when we develop our budgets moving forward. So, after thinking about where we've been, the next stage was setting the course. How are we going to be moving forward as a building, and what are going to be the process we use in developing our goals? So, the first thing that I had done was worked with staff, again, getting to know them, having them reflect on the school improvement plan, talking about district initiatives and school goals, and then taking stock. Where were we? You know, having them progress monitor, and then also come up with action steps on their own that they felt was a way to continue a plan that was currently in progress. So, to that end, we did continue to develop some of those goals, especially around PBIS, and using some of those expected behavior videos that we had talked about. That was one piece that was still there and still kind of hanging, and we wanted to see that goal accomplished, so that was one thing that we continued to work for, towards. We then used team leader meetings and grade-level collaboration, and really talked about creating a focus, and what were those building priorities that the staff were invested in. This is not a plan that I wanted to create and provide to staff, rather they needed to be a part of the creation of it. From that point, I worked with, again, surveying stakeholders during principal coffees after delivering a topic or information around something. I would then use that time afterwards to talk to parents, to figure out what were those topics that they would like to see discussed further, or what they felt were pressing issues that needed to be addressed at the school level. Taking all of that information, then I worked with my school council to set priorities and talk about a vision for what our building, a vision for our building moving forward. Finally, we drafted and reviewed our school improvement plan goals. There were several reviews and edits to those along the way, but we feel very strongly that these address those three mission statement priorities. So, where are we going? So, this is the portion where I wanted to identify those three goals, highlight some of the areas of those goals, and certainly take questions along the way or at the end if whatever, you know, however you see fit. The first piece, the first goal has to do with the component of social responsibility in our mission statement. So, "The Woodward School will support students in acquiring the skills necessary to recognize and manage their emotions and behavior, demonstrate empathy for others, and thoughtfully navigate challenging social situations through social curriculum and best instructional practices." So, here are just five of the action steps or processes that we plan on taking. For open circle collaboration, open circle is not new to the district, but we've had new staff come in. There are new resources that are developed, there are new components of the curriculum that staff need to be trained on. The calibration piece would make sure that all of our staff are delivering the same message with the same resources. It's also important to step back and say, is the open circle curriculum, is it meeting the needs of our students? Needs of students change over time, and we want to make sure that the program continues to do that and to meet our students' needs. Again, I talked about PBIS enhancements, and this is kind of a tricky one for me because when I came on board last year, I wanted to make progress in some of those areas, laying groundwork, but also realizing that these goals are not, that there's still more work to be done around PBIS. So, we're working on creating behavioral reflections and accountability practices, making sure that there's consistent language used throughout the building and in different areas and with different staff members. We found that consistency has to be there as students move from specialists to classroom teachers, or some of that message can get a little distorted. We'll also be analyzing our current training and practices around executive functioning and providing, making sure that executive functioning, teaching, and learning is taking place for students, and then how do we embed that into teachers' instructional practices? Do they need professional development in this area, and are they, are they able to kind of demonstrate and model what those expected behaviors are of our students? Around community partnerships, as we talked about before with Southborough Police Department, we're always continuing to strengthen those partnerships with Southborough Youth and Family Services, with Family Success Partnership, as well as community organizations, and even things like extended day. How can we work with those groups to create a positive learning environment or a positive home experience for students so that they can be accessible to learning when they're here with us at school? We're also looking at tiered behavioral supports. That really comes down to developing systematic approach to dealing with challenging behaviors or providing support to students who may be having difficult times. That moves from whole group lessons around open circle to small group such as lunch bunch or social thinking groups, and then down to one-on-one intervention or support. Our second goal, this centers around academic achievement. "The Woodward School will expand upon and refine our data analysis at the classroom, grade, and school level to respond to the diverse learning needs of our students and to drive instruction." So, while this is student-centered, student-focused, it's around data analysis and improvement. A big part of this, or a big piece of this, is staff development, making sure that they feel they have the tools necessary to analyze the data and to work in collaborative groups so that they can best meet the needs of our students. A few components of that, we're looking to refine our response intervention documentation and intervention systems. We're looking to design schedules that support flexible student grouping, helping students with some skill deficits, but also identifying those students who can benefit from accelerated learning opportunities. We're looking, we're continuing to assess, analyze assessments at the local, state level through our BBST teams, through our lead teacher teams and grade-level teams, and then developing strategies to close those achievement gaps. As far as curriculum calibration, it's important that, working with our literacy specialists or math curriculum coordinators, that we're developing a shared vision for consistency in student learning. Are students making the appropriate gains, and are those visions, are those views consistent as we move from classroom to classroom around Woodward? And finally, the staff training. We're looking to collaborate with our special education department to provide our support staff with appropriate training in the areas of curriculum, but also intervention strategies, data collection, and best teaching practices. Along the lines of the scheduling and staffing, I'm working, we have developed a block on Friday afternoons that is relatively open. When it's not used for care assemblies, it's a time that I'll be providing staff training in various topics to our support staff. And finally, our third goal, goal three, "The Woodward School will provide high-quality instruction and engaging learning opportunities in the area of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math that are aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks." So, this ties back to our school vision, our mission statement of lifelong learning. We'll be continuing with our Carolina Science rollout, it's year three. Along with that comes professional development for teachers. At this point, we've designed or developed teacher goals or team goals that center around science instruction, that look at the implementation of the science program, lessons and assessments, as well as using science journals to strengthen informative writing. We would love to continue to employ the engineering design process and explore different ways to do that outside of science. The idea of inquiry-based learning and using a process such as the engineering design process to identify a problem, discuss possible solutions, design, you know, elements or a way to solve that first problem, apply it, then go back, revisit, and make corrections as needed. That's a very important process that we're going to be continuing to investigate different ways to be doing that in our school. One example of that, we had a one-school-one-read that was Marty McGuire, and in that story, the main character, Marty, is cast in the play The Frog Prince. So, as part of our one-school-one-read, we would have weekly activities, the whole building was doing this at the same time in buddy groups, where students were comparing and contrasting the two different versions of the fairy tale. One week, we had students looking at nonfiction text on frogs, and then the final week, we had a STEM activity where students were to design an apparatus that would help retrieve the golden ball from the well. Students worked in collaborative groups, they problem solved, they designed the plan, they talked about the materials, they created the apparatus, they tested it, and then they reflected back after, based on what they had, what they had noticed or what their experience was. So, we feel like there's different opportunities around our building to be utilizing this process of critically thinking about a problem. We're continuing to look at the coding and technology integration. At this point, we have plans to use coding, the root coding robots in classrooms where we are integrating with math and sciences as well as social studies. We have plans in place in those lessons already established where our tech specialists will be in, looking at cardinal directions, functions of a map, and having the root coding robot navigate on a map. We're also using root coding robots in our mathematics with area and perimeter, and trying to integrate the technology and the coding into some of the math curriculum. We're also looking to create community partnerships. At this point, we've had several authors and storytellers come to our school, but I'd love to expand that to engineers, scientists. We have so many people locally and so many companies that we should, we can tap into, and I'm working with some SOS parents who have connections in those organizations to bring those guest speakers into our school. So, not just authors and poets, but rather those people in the sciences. And finally, a really exciting piece of this, of this goal is utilizing outdoor learning in the natural space. We had two grants funded not too long ago, the first being, the first being the outdoor classroom, the second being the story walk, which you've heard about, and finding different ways to have students learning outdoors, you know, learning outside. Can we look at seasonal changes that tie into science curriculum and use our story walk to lead book, to lead students on this journey, ending in the outdoor classroom where there can be inquiry-based questions? So, we're trying to tie it all together with that last, that last component of our goal. I feel like I've talked a mile a minute, so I want to clearly articulate different parts of the school improvement plan that may not have been clear as I went through, so please ask any questions you may have.
Can you, can you talk about, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of professional development going on. Can you talk a little bit about like how that'll be integrated, like are there going to be, I know parents get concerned about more days off, or is it going to be during the school day, or how's that going?
There's a few different ways that that can happen. The first is the flexible professional development time that's going to take place on teacher time outside of the school day. I've already had conversations with staff around developing their, some of them have developed their team goals or individual student learning goals with the, keeping in mind the school improvement plan goals as a larger picture, and they would be using that additional time outside to work on some of these components. I have a few staff members who are in a I have a few staff members who are in a leadership program at this point, and they have been working diligently to redesign our science space, our lab space, and in that space, we'll have monthly questions posed for students to go up and employ the designing, engineer design process. So that wouldn't really fall under the school day, but rather that's additional time that they're willing to put in. We also have building-based professional development, and Superintendent Johnson and Super, Assistant Superintendent Martineau have been gracious enough to support that additional learning time and allowing for substitutes as needed. We're trying to work strategically with some of our support staff so that they're able to work with students in not necessarily a, during a math time or ELA time, but rather can they, can that extra time happen during enrichment blocks, which we have weekly, or leading up into a staff meeting, granting teachers an hour prior to the staff meeting, which then would give them a few hours to work on one of those school improvement plan goals. The science PD has worked into our, our district-wide professional development, and that's going to be happening in the next few weeks.
I thought it was very clear, and thank you for all the time and hard work that went into it. You know, having a daughter who just started at Woodward, I see all of those things that you're talking about, and she comes out and is really enthusiastic, and I think they're, you know, really doing some great work and adding stuff outside of the classroom to the material, and it's great.
Thanks.
Can you talk a little more about the coding robots?
Sure.
I'd love how you're integrating into, what'd you say, math and something else?
Math, social studies, and also sciences. You know, we want to figure out how robots and coding can solve real-world problems. I mean, we see that every day with, whether it be like a Roomba, you know, who, a robot that travels. I think of like a root coding robot, it's kind of like that, where you would develop a, an algorithm, and then it would follow that. I don't know that I have an absolute answer for you, because I feel like this is going to be something that we continue to learn as we go. They do have drawing capabilities, and there are additional pieces that you can purchase for the coding robots that allow them to do different things. Last year, Amy Benford, our Technology Integration Specialist, because of her work with the Weiss Institute, had piloted the program initially. She was working with some of the curriculum developers who created Root and came up with student performance tasks and different strategy, or different tasks that would have the students apply the different functions of the robot. In one example, it was amazed that the robot had to work through. In another example, certain drawings had to be made by the robot through student programming. I think there's a whole lot more we can do, and it's exciting to learn as we go.
Yeah.
And my daughter really enjoyed it last year.
Good. And I said before, Woodward was kind of a bridge for the work that was happening at FIN with Clay and the work that happens at, at the area with Kathleen. So we were kind of lacking the last two years. We piloted, but we're waiting for those actual robots to arrive, which they did last year, but we were kind of in a holding pattern. So we did a lot of the legwork with Stitch Coding, which was a precursor to the actual functional robots.
Well, thank you. That was a very good presentation, and I like, I think you've got some very well-defined goals and all the bullets underneath, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That brings us to the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference Discussion and a review of the resolutions.
Annual event?
Is anyone going? I guess is the first question.
I don't think so.
Think you're going?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Because normally what we do is one of, whoever's going, gets, somebody gets appointed to be a delegate to the convention that they have there and where they discuss all these resolutions, which I've never been to that, but I'm told they simply change a lot.
They change on the, that would be important, I think, with the decisions, with the voting delegates. So what you see in the document may not be what is eventually voted on by the delegates. So it's a pretty interactive process.
Do we know what day it's on for the conference?
It's on Fri, the voting, the delegation's on Friday.
It's on Friday. Okay.
What time am I going to?
I think so. We were all trying to decide if, because we all can't go the whole time, so we were trying to decide who goes beginning, who go, you know, at what points, and then I don't think he came up with anything yet, but we'll figure it out.
Okay. But we should vote to appoint somebody as the delegate.
I think I'll be there Friday, so I could do that.
Okay.
So taken. We have to submit this to the, to the MAS-C board.
So we don't need a physical vote?
Yeah.
Okay. You're in. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And the resolutions, the resolutions are in the packet. Anyone has any comments on these?
Yeah.
We actually attended a MARS session, and the Commissioner, Commissioner Riley and a newly-appointed Finance Director, Paul Whitmore, was at the presentation, and they touched upon a couple of the items that are in the resolutions from a not only financial standpoint, but also practicality standpoint in terms of how we do business. And the resolution number five is very much like the charter school discussion that we had some years ago about making sure that any other school public funding is held to the same accountability standards, which wasn't necessarily the case when the charter schools start, started to form. So there is some similarity in language from that resolution to this one. Also, the Small and Rural District Resolution is incredibly focused on just about anything west of Worcester. An appreciation for what is really taking place in Western Mass with respect to the funding and the challenges that the rural districts are facing, whether it's a regional district or whether it's a single town. And they have been working to gain sort of credibility in terms of their concerns now for almost five to 10 years, because I know that's a long period of time, and have a very powerful coalition, particularly from a regional standpoint. They are also faced with charter schools moving into their area and very, very much declining Chapter 70 funding because of the enrollments. So even with five students or six students in their classes, which some of them have, they still have to go 1.0 teacher in that class. So again, decline of Chapter 70 funding to the point where they were finally heard and received a $1.5 million sort of infusion of money from the governor this year, but as you can imagine, with all the towns west of us, that's, that didn't go very far. But a couple of the things that were part of the discussion, which the rural school districts are moving forward with, very much were part of our conversations with Carolyn Dykman most recently, around what innovative practices or what kinds of things could change from the DESI standpoint that would allow us to be more flexible in our work, regardless of where we were located. The rural schools are really moving forward with requesting that the governor and/or DESI look at sort of the constraints placed upon all districts. It's 990 or 900 and 180. From a rural district standpoint, if they were looking at a four-day school week instead of five, they could really have some efficiencies and savings in terms of costs that they're realizing, whether it's, you know, heating and utilities, or whether it's bus transportation. So they're really having the same conversations for different reasons than, that we're having here, and aligning with some of their work on this particular issue might provide us with the support, because they are getting the attention at the state level, as well as giving them some support for, in a small way, for some of the things they're requesting. Like, give us an opportunity to help ourselves by eliminating that waiver requirement. So that might be something that we want to talk with Carolyn Dykman about a little bit more and get some support behind this resolution, just so they can do and provide for their children the same type of equitable experience that we have in the more, you know, socioeconomic-rich areas that we, that are east of Metro West. So that might be something that is sort of a twofer. We can support their work and also support our goals of trying to get some relief from the requirements of 990 or 900 and 180 days. So that was an interesting one. And with the discussions that we've had about the Health and Wellness Committee, several further on the agenda, but again, there's something about health education, and I know we keep talking about curriculum and health education, so that might be something of interest as well. Just pointing out a couple of the resolutions that might have some impact on the work that we're doing within our district.
Let's move ahead then to the legislative update.
Do you have anything to tell, or, because I have a couple of things from today?
Take it away.
So just recently, our Special Ed Director attended a session about changes in Medicaid and how those reimbursements are calculated. We've had many, many conversations about how Circuit Breaker is funded and what kinds of situations are allowed to be submitted for reimbursement. So the Medicaid conversation, while it doesn't help us directly, because the funding doesn't come directly to the schools, we process the payments. We incur a cost to have these payments processed, and then any reimbursements go directly to the town. So directly, they do not come to our district, but indirectly, we all benefit from that, right? At the regional level, it comes directly to the school system because it's a town. So they're looking at now things like vision and hearing, which were not included in the process before, so that could bring about some reimbursements somewhere along the way, whether it's the town or the region. Interestingly enough, I really hate to spring up this one word, but it's relevant for the conversation and its buses. So almost every regional district that was there today, as well as conversations I've had with neighboring superintendents, the conversation is pretty much the same, whether it was Groton, Dunstable, or Marlborough and Hudson at the ASVET Collaborative. The challenges that we are all having, very similar to us, and in some cases, stories that are significantly more dramatic than ours, although our conversations were difficult as well, and what is going on in terms of the bidding process. That in fact, when we do go out and bid for bus transportation, A, it's very difficult to find vendors who have the number of buses that we need, but also oftentimes, there is only one bidder. And so what can the state do to provide some relief and true competition in this bidding process for towns where it appears as if there is a single, you know, transportation provider who is particularly bidding into an area? So that conversation is going on at the state level because it's all a challenge that all the districts face. And so I thought that was an interesting and very timely and relevant conversation that, that all of the districts are facing. And we, as a matter of fact, in Hudson, Marlborough, and our two districts, I've engaged some conversations with the superintendent about some collaborative sharing around transportation coordinators and providers. Not all of us need a full-time coordinator, but all of us need a coordinator. So what can we do in a collaborative environment and share that cost, but also what kinds of message can we do? We all have the same transportation provider. We all have NRT. So what can we do as the bidding process gets closer, because a lot of us are going out next year for the RFP, is the fifth year of contract for most of us in the area. So it's good that the conversation is continuing, and, you know, where it goes and what it yields, it's too soon to tell, but we're having it, and they're having it at the state level as well.
Can I ask, were they the only bidder for us?
Yes. And that is the norm. So in a geographic area, and you can almost pick the, the transportation provider, you know, there are only probably a handful. In this, you know, east, in our geographic area, and there tends to be one bidder. And only one. So that's a recognized reality that we face, and so what can we do about it, and how can we start having those conversations?
So that was one of the resolutions here, was number four, was about regional street transportation, you know, a team to be addressing that issue.
Right.
I don't know what this law is that they're proposing getting rid of.
So that was a big discussion this afternoon, or this morning. That really refers to language that suggests if we decide as a school district or a regional district, whether it's a region or a single district, to provide our own bus transportation because we've purchased buses. We can't get into the bus business. In other words, we can't go to Westboro and say, hey, how'd you like to rent our buses? So that's really what that speaks to. You can have any fleet you want and produce that fleet and support that fleet through your budget, but we're in the business of education, not bus transportation, and that's really what this speaks to. And we spent a lot of time talking about that today and trying to clarify what that actually meant. So there's, and there's a $45 million supplemental budget that's been floating around at the state level, mostly for safety and mental health services, and they can't tell us where it's going. This summer, the governor released a whole bunch of language about all this money that's going to become available, and that $45 million is fizzing a little fast, but it's hopeful that some of that money will still remain intact by the time that discussions are happening. And believe it, we're in October of FY19. It's an FY18 supplemental budget that they're discussing. So FY18 never dies, and hopefully, if it doesn't, some money will come our way.
And that brings us to Old Business and the K-12 World Language Update.
Very exciting work by our K-12 Language Study Group, and Kathleen has, in your packet, there's copies of the presentation, and I think Kathleen's going to, as she has throughout this process, share the great work.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it. Just trying to connect. We will get there. Keep it up.
Every time, every time.
Here, want to see if I can connect?
It's really key.
Oh, it's in the packet too, Kathleen?
It is.
Plan B.
All right, Plan B.
I got it.
You have it?
Let me see.
Here it is. All right, keep you on our grid, and I'll go through.
All right, thank you.
Teamwork.
So I'm happy tonight to present the work that we have done together as a K-12 World Language Study. I want to begin by reviewing our purpose for this study group. Our task was to examine the research, explore programs, trends and approaches in other districts K through 12, assess the current programs in our district K through 12, present our findings to Superintendent Johnson, and then share our findings with the Southborough School Committee. So thank you for allowing me to do so. I want to thank our committee members, which were, which consisted of 10, 10-member committee with representation from the school committee and principals and administrators K-12 across the three districts. Teachers, teachers. So some of our work included looking into the benefits of early exposure to language study and cultural benefits, and a lot of our research focused on academics as well as cognitive development. It also helped to increase situative testing scores, cultural awareness and competency, career opportunities, understanding on security and community and society. Early language also, exposure also results in accelerated acquisition of language, and bilingual experience has shown to improve cognitive abilities, especially in problem-solving. So current world language programs within our district, Melkin and Trattier, and at the sixth grade level, it is an exploratory program, so it meets twice weekly, and students receive an equal experience of French and Spanish a half year each. And then in seventh grade, students have that opportunity to continue in that world, in that, one of those, either the Spanish or the French. And this grade-level course is a full-year course with students' progression in their proficiency to read, write, listen, and speak in that selected language. And then in eighth grade, they continue that same language that they took in grade seven, which prepares them for the advanced study at the high school level. And students gain a solid foundation and practice of proficiency in language acquisition. And then as they transition to Algonquin, they are offered opportunity- Thank you. areas as well as social and linguistic benefits. Thank you. And I think it's important to keep in mind that middle school world language experiences prepare our students as they move on to high school for those opportunities that they are afforded as a high school student. And it's also important to remember that this is a progression of learning, beginning in sixth grade all the way through twelfth grade. So a typical K-five language, there are three language acquisition models. The first one is referred to as the FLEX, it's foreign language exploratory, and that's between one to five percent instructional time. This is the easiest program to implement because it doesn't impact the master schedule. Typically, it's between, it's either before or an after-school opportunity. And things like this, other schools that we've talked to bring in, either teachers provide it at the, at the, as an extension at the end of the day, or they have volunteers, there may be parents who are bilingual, and so those opportunities don't impact the learning throughout the day, yet they bring this opportunity to the students. So that's the FLEX program. The second model is FLE, which is foreign language in elementary schools, and that's between five and fifty percent. And this does lead towards proficiency, but it also, it also impacts the, the school schedule. It typically meets multiple times during the week. It requires staff, it requires space, and it requires time in the schedule as well as funding. And this is more difficult to implement than the FLEX because it does require it to happen within the school day. The last model is immersion, which is between fifty and a hundred percent. So it's either a full or a partial model, and this is the most effective program for gaining proficiency, but it's also the most difficult to implement because it requires, again, staff, space, schedule, as well as funding. So those are the three models that we explored. So a K-five snapshot of programs offered by the three different models locally, including schools within our, not network, hm? Region, thank you, and, and local towns as well. So there, as you can see, there are some school districts that don't have any identified programs, leading all the way through the three different models up to immersion. And within our district, this is our progression of learning. As you can see, in grade six, it's those, that year of exploratory learning, half-year French, half-year Spanish. And then in seventh and eighth grade, students identify the language that they are going to spend the next two years learning, whether it be French or Spanish. And then in ninth, ninth and tenth, that's when they continue with their Spanish or their French, or have an option to take Latin, and depending on where their level of proficiency is, entering in from eighth grade into ninth grade will determine which course that they take within that language. And then eleventh and twelfth, the opportunities continue, and again, depending on the level of proficiency, that will determine which course level that they take. So the factors of influence, so after we had done all of our research as a team, we met and we decided, well, what does this look like for us, and what are our next steps? And what do we need to consider when making those steps, taking those steps? So the first factor of influence is the adoption of the instructional model. What model would best meet our needs? And we determined that we needed to continue to examine current K-through-five models of language acquisition learning and identifying staffing needs. This might include going to visit other districts, looking at their models, considering how we could implement it in, in our schools, alignment of learning, continue to examine the implications for change. Based on the adoption at the K-five level, what does that look like for middle school and secondary levels? And we thought those, that was important to consider. Curriculum frameworks, we need to continue to examine the interdisciplinary teaching and learning and connections within the newly released K-five social studies and ELA frameworks. And scheduling, how's that going to impact our master schedules? Do we go with a model that expands extracurricular activities K through five? And I think the point that we're at, and I'll speak to Niri, we are looking for those opportunities at our Friday farewell, which is a weekly Friday meeting that we have. We've now shifted our focus to what we call multicultural moments. So we're bringing experiences to our students through various, exposing them to various cultures and languages. And then funding, identify options to support the models that, the model that we, we identify as the one that would work best for us, including grants, community connections revolving in operational funds, and collaborative cost sharing. So again, thank you to our world language study group, and any questions, answers that I can provide to you?
Yeah, I have a few. The one, the different models where you have the percentages?
Yes.
Of instructional time, is that the percentage that you're speaking the language, whatever language you're trying to work, or what is, what is that percentage?
It's a combination. It would be the instructs, instruction, typical to a, the instruction that happens at a middle school, it's, it's speaking, speaking and listening, it's writing, it's reading, it's conversational. Depending, well, the one to five percent would be more, I would think, exposure to, to conversational.
And in the cost part, I mean, from what I understand, it's, it's difficult to find language teachers, is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
And so even if we had the money, I mean, how feasible is it? How much of a gating factor is that, I guess is the question?
Well, I think a lot of districts do have these opportunities, so I don't, I don't think it's insurmountable, but I think it would be difficult.
Okay. Do you have sort of a gut feeling for which model might be best for us at this point?
Now, as a, as a committee, we thought our next step would be to go visit some and actually see what it looks like in the, in the schools, and have conversations with the teachers and the administration, and I think Roto Web would play a key role in this as well. We'd be able to go explore those, and I think that's one of the key next steps.
What do the middle school language teachers think? Like, is there gut feeling to, that we should, do you have any more instruction? Would, you know, what do they think about it?
They're always going to say yes.
Yeah.
You know, they're very passionate about their content areas and love it when students come to them with a bilingual experience of any type.
Yeah.
That always adds, enriches the instruction and the experience for the other children in the classroom. So yes, I would say that they would absolutely support it and then have to make adjustments accordingly. And I think that was a key point of what Kathleen said at the end, is whatever we decide to do would have an impact on our courses, on our program of study, and what we would be able to offer.
I think the conversations we've had around, specifically around sixth grade?
Yeah.
Language, right now, to split-year exploratory, and I think there's been conversation around making that a more robust experience around a specific language, and maybe think about what that exploratory could look like in fifth grade.
And now, is it, that conversation started even prior to the committee beginning, that was something that was on their agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I know, my daughter's in, my older daughter's in seventh grade, and she, so she did the split last year, and she chose French, and she had a hard time picking because she loved both, and I was surprised how much she liked foreign language. Like, I mean, she, French is, I think, her second favorite class, when she, it's all her favorites, like, she adores French. She loves learning it, she loves to teach her. So I, I mean, I'm all for creating that experience earlier, if we can, seeing, you know, how she's taken to it and hearing, you know, her friends love the class, like, they all look forward to it, so, you know, I had language starting in first grade, and I found it beneficial.
Is, is this the plan in, in terms of, like, when you started? Is it K-one, or what, what, what point is considered, or are you talking about in terms of implementing one of these programs?
Again, I think we need to go and explore what those look like. Some schools have it K through five, starting in K, some have it full immersion in K, others begin it in third grades, others begin it in fifth grade.
So if you did say full immersion, do you know what other towns are doing? This might be a phase-two question, but do you know, like, just one class of it, and...
From what I know, there, Framingham, for example, has full immersion, and I believe Lexington has full immersion. Once you are in that program, or selected to be in, or choose to be in that program, you're in it for the rest, the, the K-through-five experience. I don't know what that looks like. I'd love to go and experience that.
Right.
And have those conversations because I think that's really important to have, to be able to make that decision that works best for our K-through-five class.
And they're not all, like, say there's five kindergarten classes, it might be one that's full immersion.
Yes.
I could speak to Holliston, full immersion, Holliston, French, two classes typically in K, full immersion, then they stay with that cohort all the way up to grade five, then it broadens out in grade three, where you have half-day English, half-day French, and then you slowly take in more English instruction and then less of the French.
Is it the same teacher for five years?
Um, no, it's a different teacher. And it is a tremendous struggle to maintain language teachers in the area.
I think that's a, a conversation too, that lends itself well to sort of the collaborative dialogue between districts. So, you know, what are our neighboring districts? Not a lot of our neighboring districts in the Asvet Valley Collaborative are at this point. They do not have immersion programs, they don't have FLEs programs. So kind of like the bus transportation conversation, although, you know, far more educationally sound, I guess, is a conversation about how we can share instructors. So I know at the high school level, because it is a bookend conversation, right, it's what's going on at the high school level, and they can have a very different adoption schedule of a new program, as they're talking about doing, you know, adding another language. We have French, Spanish, and really, as a, as a high school, a high-performing high school, having only two languages is not as common as you would think. A lot of them have branched out into a third language, and that's part of the conversations that's been ongoing at the high school. That can happen with planful work at just the high school level. When we start at the K-five, we're talking about really building a strategic plan over the grades to make sure that whatever we do at the K-five, when it becomes a proficiency level, how does that impact middle, and then how does that impact high school? Because it would become very systemic. But to share an instructor, because not all teachers are full-time teachers at the K-five level, particularly if there's only one or two sections of an immersion class. So, you know, engaging in that conversation in a collaborative way with our neighboring districts who now do not have a program. I commend the work of the committee. It's really the first time we've had a conversation about what are we doing around, you know, language acquisition, world language acquisition at the K-five level. So it's a great place to start, and from there, we can go in a lot of directions. I think, not to use steam in a different way, but as this picks up some steam, I think those kinds of conversations could broaden and expand to our collaborative districts because we could then share resources. So scheduling is, is a factor, and so is, you know, staff, but those are sort of the tangible pieces of the reality of implication, of implementation, but shouldn't sort of hold us back in the direction that we want to move.
So what do we do now?
I think the next step is to continue the conversation and to really explore what some of these programmatic models are like, and really maybe to engage some conversations with our, our collaborative schools. There are thirteen, very few of them are represented, and to see if we can work together in partnership to develop a model for implementation. I would love to see, or someone would love to see, at some point next year, a sort of a report on what the programs look like, and maybe move forward with an adoption of one or more of them, and have that become part of the funding cycle for next year.
What about surveying parents on what, what they want?
Part of the second-tier work, sure, of the committee? Which could be done, you know, the work doesn't end, we can continue the, the work and build towards visitations either this year or next year with some sort of presentation involved.
Okay. So are you okay with keeping this group going?
I'm all in.
So it sounds like you're hoping to have recommendations on where we want to move?
Next year.
Next year, like, in the fall next year, so we can budget for it?
Yeah, I think that's a realistic expectation.
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to, you know, you know how, like I said before, about how we want a wish list of items, I think we should, I think, did we already add this on that? Because I know we've talked to advisory about this previously.
We did. Yeah, we had it on the wish list a little bit ago.
But I think that's the kind of thing we should raise with them, so they're aware of it.
There are parts of the first step, the FLE, first step, that are already going on, as Kathleen said, in the near school. And all of that generation, it generates an excitement with the parent community around, you know, the students having opportunities to explore world cultures or to, to learn, you know, some language, to have some language acquisition. So that's kind of exciting, when we have that here and there, and a couple places in the district. So to start with that energy and that knowledge and that understanding probably will yield some great responses from parents soon when the survey goes up.
Yep. All right, anything else? Thank you, thanks for all the work that you did. Appreciate it. And that brings us to the kindergarten update on transition to tuition-free.
So I actually have what I think is a watershed moment. I know that we have not started our review of the preliminary numbers for FY twenty, but have been mindful of, you know, a number of emails and some conversations that have come my way with respect to the tuition. I'd like to go back and, and give a little history to this conversation because I think it's important to put where we're going in perspective in terms of where we've been. So I pulled, I did some research in my inbox and found that the first meeting on this topic was held November eleventh, two thousand fourteen. And I want to recognize Sarah Carr and Debbie Nazaro and Emily Collins, who joined myself and Jim Randall in an exploratory conversation about tuition-free kindergarten. And from there, it evolved lots and lots of meetings, folders all about kindergarten, and culminated in some sort of a presentation in October of two thousand fifteen, where we presented a transitioning to full free-day K model, and the projection at that time was we would hope to be tuition-free in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. The numbers that we were looking at in terms of revenue projections, the fact that there was a kindergarten grant at the time, as well as enrollment figures somewhat different than what they are now, started at thirty-two fifty, and each successive year reduced the tuition from thirty-two fifty to three thousand, to twenty-three, to seventeen fifty, to fifteen, to zero. That progression has gone from thirty to fifty to two thousand to this conversation tonight. At that time, we were not inclined to... Um, at that time we were not, um, inclined to, um, support the transitioning model. Had some more conversations, great participation from members of the school committee and the study group. Went back to the drawing board, came back with a revised transition, uh, plan and, um, became a budget priority for the, for our work. And I think this is so key because it does speak to how important those budget priorities are in guiding our work. Uh, many, many meetings, uh, the projections that we had in FY sixteen to FY twenty in this particular PowerPoint, we had different renditions. This was in February of two thousand fifteen, had us, believe it or not, one oh one in FY nineteen. And we have one oh three full paying, uh, full tuition students. So that, I don't know if that was a dartboard that we hit by luck or was strategic analysis of both NESDEC enrollments and census. We have a combination of two revenue sources, not three any longer, the grant long since sunsetted. And so, um, what we look to do is have that strategic balance of enough revenue to, um, slowly shift costs to the operational budget. While either ceasing to collect tuitions and expending down that money, but to continue to, um, move the process out multiple years by collecting tuition. So after some analysis and I, um, projected out to FY twenty, twenty, twenty-two in the budget analysis. If we move eighty thousand dollars onto operational this year, which initial review of some of the numbers is a possibility. And the revenue stream that we project for this year, um, trends to the positive. We would be able to, with the commitment by the school committee to, to also expend down all of the reserve revolving funds next year. Half of that in twenty-one, as we moved to budget for twenty-one. And move fifty thousand onto operational. And in FY twenty-two, spend down the, all of the revolving funds. Um, and move another fifty thousand on, which is doable. We could go free tuition next year.
So could you repeat that, how, so?
Did you hear the, did you hear the numbers of those revolving funds and half of it and the rest of it?
So, so right now we have a base, right? We, we started the year with some revolving funds and I intend to break this out more in the budget when we get to the budget process, but I know the conversation tonight, what is the feasibility of this?
Yeah.
So what we would do, um, as, is as we have done since we moved in this direction. So the first year, we transitioned some funding from what used to be dependent on tuition to operational. I think it was a hundred thousand the first year we moved. And we're able to do this, not because there's this great pool of money waiting to be absorbed by free full day K, but purposely making decisions as an administrative team that, uh, we choose to fund this initiative as opposed to fund something else. Uh, that's why it's a priority and it continues. So when we started this conversation, we were about fifty-fifty, um, operational and, um, dependent on tuition. Right now we're about seventy-two to, um, seventy-four percent on operational, which is a huge shift in two years. And with this move, um, we would be able to spot a tu- a tuition free model next year with the commitment by the school committee that in subsequent years, they're also going to move fifty thousand more into the operational budget. For a total of about two hundred thousand more that has to be absorbed in the operational budget. Right now our dependency on revenue for the revolving funds is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So when we stop collecting tuition, we still have some money in the revolving account, which has to be spent on kindergarten.
So that's four years of fifty thousand a year basically?
Two at fifty, one at eighty.
Okay.
FY twenty at eighty. And the two subsequent years would be fifty. The two subsequent years would be, um, expending half in each of those years of the remaining tuition collected in revolving funds. So it's doable. I feel very confident that, um, if there's support for this, we could be tuition free next year. The, I will say that I'm excited about that because in all of the presentations, our target was three to five years. Now, if we did not want to commit to that, we could reduce our tuition next year. Um, we could reduce it to fifteen hundred, collect some more tuition revolving and not shift as much in those subsequent years. But eventually there has to be, there's a balance, right? Tuition has to zero out. So I think this is the eas- this is the fastest way to get there and the soonest we can commit to a model that would allow us to say with fairly, um, good resolve that we could be tuition free next year. Cause it would spend down the tuition revolving over a period of three years. So this year, for example, in the model, um, we will be, we will be using about a hundred and sixty fi- here it is, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of tuition revolving.
This is two thousand nineteen.
Uh-huh. And then it goes down from there. So obviously I can go through the numbers and I will when we have the budget presentation, but I wanted to for tonight, uh, just be prepared to say what is possible with the commitment of the budget shifting from, from dependency on revolving to operational. So this year, as I say, this year, I'm already in FY twenty. If we shift that eighty, marry that with about, uh, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of revolving, that leaves us with the balance that would be split between the two subsequent years, matched with another fifty thousand on operational and we could sustain that. Now also, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is, you know, it's, it's okay to say we can sustain that, but we also have to appreciate what happens if enrollments go up a little. So this year with seven teachers, um, and I would encourage us to remain at that number going forward, um, throughout this transition process. We could absorb, because of our current class sizes, we could absorb about twenty students. So we could see growth, still allow sustainability without adding additional teachers. That would bring your class sizes up to about eighteen, which is still very reasonable and we're not, within our class size policy. We have seven sections, we could probably add three per section. So that gives us some growth factor in there as well, because we don't want to talk about, we can go to tuition free and then say, oh, we have to add a teacher right now. Cause that's another, you know, whatever amount on the budget. So, um, that's where we are. I'm extremely pleased to be able to report that. I think, you know, kudos and, and commendations to everybody who's been involved in this conversation. It was an all-in commitment by the building administration to support this move. I think, I think it's a moment of pride for everyone to have South Row become one of the many or the more districts that are, that are now offering free full, um, I know Paula keeps saying tuition free. Tuition, it's not free for kindergarten, but tuition free, um, kindergarten.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
You know, kind of hard to sort of sign off on this without seeing the whole budget picture, but, you know, I trust that you know your numbers, so it's very encouraging.
Yeah, uh, you know, they're here and, you know, I can go over the detail with, with some, some omission of names, but, um, reviewed numerous times with several people just to make sure the numbers are accurate. And again, I, I, I suggest to you tonight that what we would want to do is make sure that the revenue projections that we have for this year are tracking to the positive. Um, and once that money is in our, what I also did was move twenty-one and twenty-two forward in terms of what I think contractual raises would be. So making sure that we're not using FY eighteen or nineteen dollars to inform our decisions for FY twenty-two and they're not. They're, you know, they've, costs escalations have been including, included in the numbers. We don't have to make a decision tonight. Um, I, I'm also, I know we're not jumping to twenty, but this is about FY twenty's budget. We have, um, had a great, uh, working session this week. And because, um, we've been able to eliminate a lot of the, the heavy paper involved in the budgeting process. I know, I, I feel fairly confident in suggesting to you that we might be able to look at the preliminary budget the first week in December. I think our numbers will be in, we're looking at all of our grants because a lot of our staff is, is compensated on grants. We have to not just worry about what's on operational, but where's everyone being, you know, where are they being paid from? All of our financial resources, what are our revolving accounts like in terms of facility rental, which Brian's going to get into a little bit more? That's just all factors in in terms of making some decisions. But, um, we had a, a great working session. I know the principals have been at, um, their budgeting, um, work, the building levels. We have a deadline for Tuesday to review our South Row numbers, uh, at least preliminarily. And that gives us another, you know, good month to chew on those numbers before we prevent, present them to school committee. If we're able to go forward with the preliminary, um, you know, all to, uh, all, more times than not, we have voted the very same preliminary as are recommended. We have that appropriate wait time by one month, but, um, we could certainly, depending on, you know, what our position was about the budget, uh, bring that in, um, for a preliminary and a recommended, or we could have another school committee name for the budget if we, if we really needed to. I did meet, we met Purple this week and, uh, we talked about what are the real deadlines? Because there was some, a little bit of confusion and I think, um, we could live with, with approving the budget in December. If the numbers come in and we are moving al- along at a fairly rapid pace, I might even be able to, um, I don't want to commit to this tonight, but I might even be able to bring preliminary numbers in November. So again, a lot of great work by a lot of folks sitting around the table and having some good conversations about where we're headed.
Great.
We've done, we've moved all of our staffing forward already, so we have our staffing numbers forward. And now we just have to sit down and look at it holistically in terms of what does that mean for South Row K eight and how does that fit into our budget priorities?
Very good. Anything else on that?
Uh, I'm, I'm up for Yahoo on this one. I'm really excited.
Yeah, that is, it's very exciting. I, I hear a lot from parents asking about this, so they'll appreciate this update.
We're two years earlier than we thought.
Yeah, that's amazing.
He dazzled me with the numbers out there, so.
I'll, you, you. I'll leave the sheets. Absolutely. I'll send them to anybody who'd like to review them.
All right. Moving on then, we have the Health and Wellness Committee update.
So the update is, um, a couple of things. Uh, we have posted for the physician, interestingly enough, um, the health grant that we received that funds a lot of the work, um, from the district nurse leader and, um, pays for some of the supplies and some of the tests and so forth that we use, is actually changing significantly next year. So the part of the grant that required us to have a health, district health leader, uh, may not even be included in the grant anymore. So, um, in many conversations with Lori Partey before she retired and is happily traversing the continent, um, at this point in time. Um, she's been very, um, committed to the notion that it's in such flux, we're not really sure what we're going to see in terms of the grant. Which again, creates difficulty in budgeting, right? So her feeling in conversations with, um, the state is that they're going to fund specific silos of focus rather than a holistic approach, uh, through the grant, which will potentially present some challenges to us as a district in terms of how we want to fund this position. Um, I bring that up because Lori actually drove a lot of the work of the Health and Wellness Committee. So we've posted for her for the remainder of this year, her position internally, um, and we do have a number of applicants. And that person temporarily, along with, um, Kyle Parson, the food service director, will sort of steer the ship. But it does present some opportunities for conversations about where we want to go forward with the Health and Wellness Committee, which was required, uh, by a nutrition program, not by the nursing program, not by the, um, the grant. Nurse leader position was a requirement of the grant, but the reason we have a Health and Wellness Committee is because it's required of the, the nutrition program. So it's been sort of a morphing. A couple of things that I would like to suggest that, um, as we move forward, and I know, um, Jen, you're very much interested in this conversation, is a dialogue about what is the purpose now of the Health and Wellness Committee? It's existed in its current format for many years, but is it time now to really engage in a more broad-based conversation about where we see this committee going? And is it an important enough position to think about stipending sort of someone whose primary focus is just moving our health and wellness initiatives forward? So it's a different approach to that. And I bring that up because just, um, you know, today I quickly wrote down a number of things that would fit very nicely into that whole, um, health and wellness conversation. Uh, one of them just came up two week, last week, uh, Dr. Medina and the, um, Metro West Coalition and the South Row, um, Youth and Family. And, uh, Marnie Houlihan, um, reached out through my office and wanted to have a in-depth conversation about how collectively we could influence the bylaws in the town of South Row with respect to vaping. And, you know, akin to the tobacco, uh, regulations, the state has basically set twenty-one is the, is the, you know, the point at which you can purchase these products. And do, do we want to have conversations with the town of South Row and the various boards about what we can do around the proliferation of this?
So does the state have? That is a regulation or is it?
They do, but.
So they, so they have made, they have made a regulation?
Twenty-one. Um, so Dr. Medina, obviously this is a passion of his and so it ended up, we met this week, we met on Monday. And, um, it was myself, um, Dr. Medina and Mark Purple. So, uh, we all decided we would go off in different directions, but this is something that a Health and Wellness Committee could spearhead if we change the focus of the work. And so, um, he's moving on to the Health Board, the Board of Health in South Row for conversation. Dr. Medina has moved on to gathering more data and checking in the regulations. And here I am moving on to some conversations about the Health and Wellness. Obviously this is something that is very important to us. The implications of vaping is still not known, right, fully? So, um, that's where it resides, but this is something that really doesn't reside in the superintendent's office. It really should be going to a committee whose purpose is to, you know, talk about these issues on a broader level. And then working together, see if we want to move in this direction or not. So that is, um, that's something we've been talking about. We had a wonderful presentation. I was actually quite surprised, um, you might have seen the flyers on, um, sexting, which is, uh, a, a pretty, um, more than I even ant- expected to hear, pervasive, very destructive practice. And the Women's Coalition Commission from Framingham sponsored this season in North Row. So again, health and wellness, right, health and wellbeing, it isn't just the physical, it's also the social and emotional piece. And then I've had some initial conversations through the chair with the school committee about moving forward with a very successful model that has been launched in several districts. And that is to engage the services of a third-party, um, health and wellness provider, um, and have them locate in one of our schools. So that oftentimes when we make a referral, students are waiting months and months and months to get, to get an appointment. And so in many con- in many districts, including the one that Dr. Medina works in, um, they've built a collaborative relationship with a third-party vendor. We give them geography, we give them space. We incur no cost for this access and we have preferential, um, service providers for our students. So that if we're making a referral, and it doesn't supplant any position that we have now, it rather, um, provides a higher level of service. So when we make a referral because a student is in need, oftentimes that student is without. So when we make a referral because a student is in need, oftentimes that student is without a good educational experience at that point because they need other kinds of services. So having the ability to have proprietary access is oftentimes incredibly helpful to parents. I would say, I'm a little bit familiar with it, Craig Maxim, who has actually volunteered to come and present, sort of is the creator of this model, and he started in the school where I was high school principal years ago. Since then, there have been numerous districts that have adopted this model. In districts where there aren't as many providers, or there aren't as many, you know, available resources, oftentimes they just select the one that happens to be in the community. For our district, my recommendation would be that we pursue an RFP because I think we, we want, we would be an attractive venue for, you know, Charles River Medical, or UMass, or South Row Medical to come into our schools. We've had preliminary conversations, and we believe that to start this model, it would be best to start at our preschool, kindergarten, where you're building, you know, change of behaviors, service providers. For our youngest students, we do know that the need is, is high at the preschool level. So this is again, a zero cost to the district and a complete upside for our parents. So this is something that, you know, the Health and Wellness Committee could really partner with us on. So, you know, how we form that is, is going to be essential.
Are these mental health services, or medical services, or both?
Mental health services.
Did we talk about this in the combined school?
We did.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this.
So we actually had a presentation, I invited them in over the summer. Dr. Medina was present, Sarah Cassell was present, Craig Maxim came and also provided some support. And it went out, you know, as a general invitation and to the coalition who engage in this on a regular basis. They were present, family and youth services attended, and unanimous, this just makes sense. You know, there's very little downside. The importance is to say to the parents, we have no relationship with this provider. This is to provide ready access and services to your child, you can choose to go anyplace you want. But the relationship established allows us, allows us to get quick care for our parent, for our students. So we, I would like to move forward with an RFP. We would not be writing it, I'm not the most knowledgeable, Craig Maxim, who has done this for many districts, would be happy to provide us with the language as he has in others. And just put that out there and see what we can, see what we can attract. Clayton has, I think we just, we, I don't know if we actually decided, but we had a lot of conversations that we might be able to find a space, not a lot of space, they don't require a lot of space at FIN for, for those parents. Because we do know we have a lot of students coming in at the younger age, and they need these direct services. So very excited about it. It's a new venue for us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think it's a great idea. I would, you know, encourage, encourage also, you know, in terms of mental health services, one of the things with the RFP to think about is to look at places that are providing, providers who are doing empirically supported treatment. So you'll have a lot of mental health providers who just kind of do eclectic therapy, and that's not, you know, we want to be having providers come in who actually do cognitive behavioral therapy or therapies that are supported by evidence to help kids. So I think that would be one criteria to think around the RFP.
So my thought would be to invite Craig back with Dr. Medina and just extend an open invitation. Like we did again to the Health and, you know, health providers in our communities. And then just have those questions asked. I think, and I believe it's something that we can move on this year.
Can I ask about, I don't know if I missed something, but you were saying that we have, when you were talking about the funding for a position for Health and Wellness, is that, can you talk a little bit about that position? Because I'm not sure I'm totally familiar with that.
Sure, so right now, the district nurse leader is funded through a nursing grant.
Right.
And so my suggestion would be that we look, not that they would not be a participant on the committee, but that we look at what are our expectations around a Health and Wellness Committee? What do we need? What are we looking for from this committee?
When you say that, like our subcommittee, is that what you're talking about?
A committee that's district-wide.
Okay.
Yep. So the members of the Health and Wellness Committee have included members of the school committee. There's usually a representative, I think Jen volunteered to be, that, to be the liaison. But it also includes parents from our community. There are teachers, some of our healthcare providers in the district, so it's very broad-based. But as I said, it has not been reviewed for its purpose and its composition for some time. So as you can see, we just added like four or five different topics that could very much fall under that. So to do a little, you know, due diligence around what would be a committee that can really enact change in a meaningful way, and to really spearhead some of these initiatives in collaboration with our healthcare providers. So the notion about whether we separate it from the grant, because in fact, it, we may not have a district nurse leader, right? We just don't know at this point, because we don't know what the grant's going to look like. But really to offer someone an opportunity who has this skill set and this knowledge to come in maybe on a stipend basis to lead this committee work.
Good.
There's a lot of topics.
Yeah. And that brings us to the food services update. Do you need my guest?
So at the last meeting, I think Jess, you had, Jessica, you had suggested that Carl Parson join us tonight. And he is here to address the committee.
Thanks for having me. Just want to update you on some of the things we're doing at the lunch program. One of the thing is farm-to-school update, how we purchase our produce is, we go through a state bid process and we get a vendor, and that vendor makes a pledge to purchase local produce as much as they can. Obviously, Massachusetts doesn't have a huge growing population of produce. But we do buy what we can, local, could include places like Connecticut or New York, New Hampshire, things like that. So we always get a list of what is local. Currently, we've had local cucumbers this year, Macintosh apples that we're just now starting to get, our local apples. Again, those come from different growers from the area, so. Tomatoes have been local, and squash, and we're currently doing pears this year, which fresh hand fruit we have every day in all of the schools. So we have posters that come from farm-to-school, and we promote those pears to the students to get them, so. Items we're looking for for next month are fresh greens, broccoli, cabbage, and potatoes. Obviously, those are a bit later growing season items. I'm working with Chestnut Hill Farm to be able to set them up as a vendor so that we can purchase some items from them. Again, that, you know, we're looking at the greens, the broccoli, and the cabbage from them, so. They're busy right now with the farmers' markets and things like that, so we're looking for a relationship with them. So again, we're just trying to get as local as we can in South Row, would be great. Just unfortunately, New England's growing season's really tight. You know, another thing I'm, I'm actually trying to do is Clayton has a little bit of a grant, and I'm trying to. I found a product that actually would allow us to grow produce in our classrooms. It's a growing rack, it's, it's really, it's just, it's awesome. You know, it's four racks, there's lights, they're on timers, so the lights are on when the kids aren't in the room. The kids learn to compost because it's about forty-five days you grow lettuce. And it's such a system that you put the dirt in the ground, or, you know, in a tray, and you put a plate on top, and then you put, it has holes in the plate so the kids space out the seeds properly, and then you pull the plate off and you put more dirt on, and then you use the plate to set the depth height. And then there's a certain amount of water that they water, and they have to keep track of it. And then in forty-five days, you'll have greens, baby Lola Rosa, Swiss Shard, all kinds of neat things that you can do. And then after forty-five days, the product is harvested, obviously you know where it came from, and there's no pesticides, you know, it's grown indoors, you can watch it grow. And then, once that is done, then you take the clippings, and then you take another pile of dirt, and then you put it in the dirt, and then you put a product in it that comes from worms that helps break down the product, and then you take that other dirt that was in, that sat for forty-five days, and then you start the whole process over again, so every forty-five days you're getting fresh produce. You know, it's, it's a great program, the kids learn how to grow, the growing process. You know, you can do experiments, you can overwater one part, underwater another part, and see the different effects of weather, you know, too much light, too little light. It's pretty fascinating, so, you know, we're looking at that. I think once we get a foothold that will grow rapidly, and, you know, another thing that says, you know, the presentation I saw was you can grow, you put it, again, you use the same plates, but you put it in small-to-go containers, and then you can start to grow the lettuce, and then you can sell it for a fundraiser. So people can take it home, grow lettuce at home, harvest it. So, you know, the kids, they get involved in their products that they, that they eat, that they get, they get excited about it. You know, just tell their friends, hey, let's eat this fresh lettuce, I grew it in my class, so. We're looking at that, we're excited about that. I am attending the Keeping It Local Conference at the John Stocker Institute in Framingham on October twenty-third, and it just discusses incorporating agriculture and locally procured foods in our national school lunch program. So I'm looking forward to that. They bring in some local farmers, and they help us to understand what goes into the growing process so we get better knowledge of how to do it, and give them our ideas and our input, what we can actually sell. The Brussels sprouts are a real hard sell. You know, we've been doing squash this year. You know, it doesn't sell as well as we'd like, you know, we try to season it up, put a little crushed tomatoes in it, fresh basil, try to do something a little exciting with it, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a hard sell, especially at the younger grades. But we definitely keep trying it, let them know that it's local, you know, it's fresh. Maple syrup. Maple syrup.
Ground sugar.
Or, or bready, yeah.
Yeah.
Fry it, yeah. We haven't had fry latest for quite a few years. Another item we're looking at is an online menu program. We've looked at a couple, we're looking at another one, and this will, like, our menus, I produce, and then we put it online. And the trend is, you know, five years ago you didn't have it. Now, with technology being what it is, the items, I would build a menu with kind of preset items, we could also customize it also, but it would have the menu items in there, and then when a parent or a student were to go online, they could look it up, and if they had a gluten allergy, they could check that box, and it would cross off the items that had gluten. So it would customize it to what was available for the students. And then you could click on the item, and then it's hyperlink that has the nutritional piece, the sodium, the fat, the carbohydrates, and all those types of things. It's a great service, there's more and more every year, so we're looking at that. Some of them are expensive, some of them aren't so expensive, so we're trying to find what's going to be the best for us. So we're looking to do that, hoping by January. So that'll be exciting. You know, I'm always looking for feedback. One of the things I've been working with, with RIT is Google surveys. It's new to me, but I've been playing around with it, working with my staff, trying to develop them. There's a lot more surveys, I think, with students now, with, you know, the computers, and the more and more we get into Chromebooks and things like that in the classroom, it's a, it's a quick way to get good surveys, or get good information out of the students, make it quick. I'm conducting meetings with the PTOs to gather questions to use on these surveys. I want to find out what the questions they want to get from me, what's important to them, so that I can extract that data and just drill that down. You know, we're always, we want to always improve our menu, we try different things, at least once a month, we try a new item. You know, we find, you know, like our tangerine chicken, you know, we tried it a couple of years ago, it was a government commodity that we diverted to, we got it, we tried it, it kind of was flat, we tried it again, and it did a little bit better, and then we did some tastings, and now it's a fairly popular item. So we find that we have to try things several times. You know, this month we're trying chicken Caesar salad. I know like my kids, you know, they're fifteen and twelve, really like it, you know, salads are a big thing now, so, you know, we can use government commodities in it, local produce if it's available. And just something different for the kids. And I think, I think, you know, it may take a couple of times, but we definitely, we're tracking it now. More of with our, you know, point-of-sale system, I'm able to get the data quickly. And then we're really starting to kind of like log that and see what worked, what didn't work, why it worked, why it didn't work. You know, a couple of things, like, give an example, is the tacos, you know, like, you know, my manager at FIN is like, eh, it just doesn't go well here, I think the kids are a little bit younger. So we kind of just were playing with the idea, it's like, let's build your own taco, let's get the kids involved into actually making it, putting it together, give them kind of an activity. And she said, her account went up like over twenty, I believe. So, you know, we're trying to do the different things, have them build it, get them involved in that. It sounds kind of cheesy, I guess, lack of a better word, but we're definitely trying to just get the kids involved in doing fun things like that. Student focus groups, I met with their green team last year at Steve's School. Got some great ideas, they, you know, we, we're on another topic, but, you know, sort of, well, I got you here, what, what we want, you know, you get the, you get some crazy stuff, you know, you get the McDonald's hamburgers and the fish sticks. So we tried fish sticks for a little while, and, you know, they did okay, but they just weren't really popular enough for us. But we'll see them from time to time, you know, we, we figured out we can't just do it every month. So we're doing it maybe every other month, they can, the kids kind of can look forward to it. I think it's like a lot of things, you get a following for it, and then you get some kids who don't really care for it. But, you know, on the other hand, we've really been trying to develop some different alternate lunches, so when we, when we do the fish sticks, we can still capture the sales. And we've really done that at Trotter, and I think it's been going well. You know, we keep it fluid, we're not really set in our ways because we listen to the kids, and sometimes we try things, and it goes well, and then it starts to drop off, we change it up. You know, we move it from one day to another day and things like that. So we're always constantly changing like that for the kids to what they want. You know, spicy chicken patty was great for us, you know, it was an alternate on Tuesdays and Wednes, or Tuesdays and, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then it kind of just dropped off, so we changed one of the days to a regular chicken patty. And, you know, once again, we see the sales pop back up, so. Again, we're always just trying to use data. And just the other day, we did two hundred and thirty-seven meals at Trotter, which is the highest we've had since I've been here, so. Two hundred was the mark a while ago, and then now, you know, it was two-ten was the mark, now two-twenty was the mark. And now, two-thirty-seven was the mark, so.
Pretty good.
We're definitely trying to do that. So, and then I'm looking to, I know Green Team is becoming, forming at Trotter, so I'll be talking to them soon. You know, they have some other topics they want to talk to me about, it's styrofoam. Obviously, we use plastic when we can, sometimes we need to use styrofoam if our dish machine is down, or we have an issue, or if the kids go to their classrooms, things like that. So, you know, we, we're going to talk to them about that, but while I have them there, I'm definitely going to pick their brains and see what they want. Again, you know, the menu planning is a interesting, complex, not fun, and they're exciting, I'm sure, great. A big packet of it today, it's like, yeah, this is a lot of data. Let's see, I'm working to set up some PTO coffee sessions, I had one last year, had some parents who had some concerns, so we met with them, was able to explain to them, you know, about an hour and a half, what we do, how we come up with the menus. And I think some people had some, you know, their eyes were opened a little bit, how it happens, it's, it's complex. You know, we have a lot of regulations, you know, the whole brain issue that we started in two thousand eight. You know, the industry's caught up to it, the better product, I believe, that we have now. You know, using government commodities, you know, we divert some of our government commodities to some Tyson Chicken products, and to some cheese, and, you know, you know, if we don't. And, you know, if we don't divert, we get a lot of American cheese. But if we divert some of our product, we can get shredded mozzarella, or we can get, um, the bread, you know, the breadsticks with mozzarella and, you know, the pizza dippers. So, you know, we try to do some different things with that, because otherwise it'd be just American cheese all the time. But then again, we like American cheese because we do the grilled cheese. It's made of soup, and it's huge. You know, and then, you know, we tried to do, you know, in the beginning of the year, we're like, oh, it's hot, you know, let's not do the soup. And boy, boy, did we hear about that, which is great. You know, I, we, you know, my, my managers are on the front line. They definitely speak to the kids as they go through the line, make sure that what they like, what they don't like. You know, I'm in all of the, every day I'm in a cafeteria serving or helping out, asking, talking to the kids. I love to hear what they like, what they like, what they don't like. Again, you know, it's, I can't do McDonald's, can't do Big Macs. But we can do some other fun stuff. You know, one of the questions was, is how do we make the menus? You know, we have to have five components. It has to have a fruit. It has to have a vegetable. It has to have a grain, which is, has to be a whole grain-rich. So it has to be fifty-one percent whole grain in all of our products. So even like our chicken nuggets, the breading on them is made with a whole grain breading. So five years ago, you didn't even see that in the grocery store. Now you're starting to see that in the grocery store. Tyson has decided that, hey, maybe there's a market for it outside, because commercial market and retail are very different. So all of our products are made with lower sodium, lower fat. You know, any of the snacks that we serve are on the John Stocker A-list. So in order for a snack to be on the A-list, it has to go through rigorous testing. It has to be only a certain amount of calories. It can't be above two-hundred and ten calories. It has to have, uh, lower sodium and lower fat. So, again, the industry caught up to that several years ago. So, uh, you know, you'll see the chips are either the baked or the RF on the bottom. Instead of saying reduce fat, which isn't appealing to the kids, they put RF on it. So kind of a little bit of marketing employed. But it's one of those things that the industry has done to help us out, to be able to still to compete and serve a healthier snack. Another component that has to have is a meat or meat alternate. So again, that's why the pizza, you know, it has a whole grain dough. That, so like when we have the Sal's Pizza, it's made for schools. It's a fresh, made that week product. It's whole grain. We use government commodity cheese that's on it. And again, their sauce is specially made, and it's a lower sodium sauce. It's meaty requirements for the government. So it's actually, it's pretty good. And then we, the, the milk. So that's how we look at lunch, is in the components, which sounds kind of odd, but that's kind of how we do it. And then it has to be a certain size. So it has to be two portions. So it has to be two ounces. So that's why when you see, when we do a chicken nugget, the breading counts as a grain, but it's only one grain portion. So that's why we serve the dinner roll next to it. So the chicken nuggets and the dinner roll, that gives you your protein, your two ounces of protein, and then your two grains. So with a fruit or vegetable, that's a complete reimbursable meal. So we always have at least one fresh fruit every day at all the schools. We usually have more than that. I know today we had apples, pears, and bananas. So they're always available for the kids. You know, again, it's the difference of where we buy apples. We buy a certain size apple. So it's a ninety count to a case of apple, which meets our requirements. Because if it's too big of an apple, it's too big of a portion, and our costs go down. You know, our costs actually go up with that. So, that's kind of, you know, where we are with that. Going off of a little bit of the, um, the health and wellness, one of the things like we have done is we worked with the nurses to get the allergen information to the schools as quickly as possible. So one of the things I do is in the very beginning is the nurses compile the data. It comes to us. We can enter it into our point-of-sale system, which is another great tool that we use, because allergen is, is very important to us. So in order, how that works is when a student comes up to the line, they put their number in. Usually the screen just comes up, and it has the student's name, and it lets us know if they have money or not. And when the kid has an allergy, the first thing that pops up and it says allergic to whatever, or celiac disease, or lactose intolerant. And then you can go past to complete the sale unless you actually acknowledge that. And then another piece that we do is on each of the cafeterias, we have a little white chalkboard that we write on there. So that if something is made in a facility that processes sesame seeds, we write that on there. That doesn't mean it contains sesame seeds. It doesn't mean that. But they like to let people know that there is a potential for that hazard. So we try to communicate that with the students. And then we definitely, that data goes with the student throughout their entire career. So we're constantly updating that. You know, some kids grow out of certain things. So, and it's not just that we can just wipe it off the list. We really have to have a doctor's note or a parent's note. Says that my student is no longer in order for us to remove it. So we take that very seriously. We started meeting with the nurses about once a year. And what came out of that is we actually did some professional development together. Talked about what is sanitation, what's disinfecting, things like that. And, you know, we definitely try to work with them so that we have that relationship. So when a new student comes in, they come down and say, hey, I got a new student who's allergic to peanuts. So we're able to get that data in quickly. You know, we, again, take it very seriously. Started working with some of the school nurses. Carb counts, you know, we're starting to see diabetics come in. The insulin is important. So she has like a quick count of the menu items, and it's kind of in a nice little sheet so that it's quickly to add up what the meal is, and be able to administer the insulin. So, you know, they work, they collaborate with that. That's about kind of it. If anybody has any questions or...
I have a quick question. So you mentioned, uh, you mentioned that Chestnut Hill Farm had some other farm to school updates. I'm just wondering how those kind of things, have they been implemented yet? What the cost? And, you know, and again, you know, how we, how, what the plan is to transition to maybe more of these packaged meals, these like fresh produce. And I think one of the things for me, getting the update for the school lunches, is that I've heard from a lot of parents concerned about, and, you know, we, I think I was part of that group of folks who had, um, concerned, you know, about, well, I don't want my child eating a mozzarella stick for their lunch, even though it comes with all these other components that are part of the required thing. So I'm just wondering how, what kind of changes would be needed to go? Or are we already doing these, like, farm to?
Well, we're already doing the farm to school. We've been actually doing it for quite a few years. Again, it's really, it's tough to plan on, I'm going to get cucumbers because of the way purchasing is done at the produce companies purchasing. You know, there isn't a lot of that produce available on a regular basis. So they buy what they can. Because it does save them money, because it's not transported from California. You know, like now our lettuce is coming out of, from Arizona, because that's as close as we can get, romaine lettuce. So if they can get romaine that's closer, it doesn't travel so far. So it's cheaper for them. They let us know what we have, and then we specify, we'll take the local Macintosh apples. I think we could probably do a better job of letting folks know that. So I'll definitely get that where it came from and get that in some type of like a little newsletter, so that can go out with a backpack, so people can understand that.
I mean, I think that would be helpful, given the, some of the parent, and I think there's a parent group out there somewhere that's interested in either, like, the, having a garden at the school or doing something. So having that information be communicated out to the parents, I think, would be helpful. I know you've heard or seen similar things.
Yeah. Gardens are tough. It's like I grow a garden at home, and it's the same thing. You know, you get it in the ground, and you watch it, and then school's out. And then just before school starts, you start getting tomatoes, and you pull a couple peppers, and, you know, life is good, and then school starts. And then you don't have, I know I personally don't have much left because of the way my garden is. But we're definitely, you know, like I said, with, I know that grant, trying to, trying to get a piece of that action. But I just think, I think it's great that we can get produce here around. But anyway, I digress. You know, the prepackaged meals, you know, unfortunately, you know, in doing the studies, that's what kids like. They like the, the chicken nuggets. They like the hamburgers, and we get a lot of government commodity hamburger. So we definitely try to make our own spaghetti and meat sauce, or pasta and meat sauce, and that type of thing. And that's why we use a lot of the tacos, because we use the government commodity, you know, beef. Again, that's why we're trying to, at least once a month, do something different, like the chicken Caesar salad. Try to do something fresh that we control, that we do in-house. So we're definitely working on that constantly. And, you know, using the, my kitchen manager's input for that. Because again, they, you know, they're more on the front lines. They talk to the kids. They can see what is in there. You know, one of the things I always do too, you know, custodial staff kind of looks at me sometimes, is when the kids are done eating, I like to go see what they're throwing away. Because if they're throwing it away, why would I serve it? You know, waste their money on it. So I definitely do that. They have to look for trays, because kids like to throw the trays away. So, you know, that's a constant focus of ours. You know, we're always looking to do different things. Hopefully we can, you know, when the broccoli comes in, we'll do either a stir-fry or a nice steam, and then put something on it for the kids. Or, you know, maybe just let them have a roll and put a little ranch, you know, low-fat, low-sodium ranch dipping sauce on it. You know, we're going to try to do some different things like that.
So I have a couple of questions. So the, um, I love the idea of, if, I don't know if it was the grant that was with Clayton or a different grant. I love the idea of them growing something in the classroom, because I know with my own picky eaters, the way that I got them to eat vegetables was growing it in our garden.
Right.
That's now they, one of the only vegetables they eat are fresh green beans, because they've been growing them since they were little kids, and they love picking them. And, you know, they, they love that. So I love that idea, and I know kids are super picky. I mean, my kids never buy lunch, except for pizza dipper day and chicken nugget day, and that's it. So, because they're picky eaters. But I would love to see, you know, I love the idea of the growing the food in the classrooms, especially at the younger age. Because as we all know, if you get them at a young age, then maybe they will try that, you know, stir-fry or whatever, because they're being exposed to. So I would love to see some sort of collaboration with food services in like the younger grades, school, like the classrooms, to really start exposing kids to different things when they're really young. So then they're more open to it as they get older. And I, I always remember Paul saying to me, like, his daughter eats broccoli only because they had it at school with ranch dip. And that's the, and other kids were eating it, so she ate it too. And it's like, you get them young. We can get them eating more of those interesting meals and the fresh stuff from the farm and all that. So I would love to see something like that. And then the other thing, this question comes up all the time with parents, and I'm still not sure of the answer. Are the portions the same size for like a kid in kindergarten and a kid in middle school?
Yes and no. So like, if you have, it goes by calorie count, and that's actually one of the not exciting charts that I had before, that I will definitely get to you, this packet. But like, your portion of fruit or vegetable will be, uh, four ounces. So if you have, say, canned peaches, it's four ounces for all of those grades. Now, when you start getting it to the eighth grade, they can start taking two, and they can increase those amounts that they eat, because their calorie count goes up. So when we do, say, like a portion of spaghetti, we do a larger portion of pasta and meat sauce.
For the older grades.
Because then we have to start getting our calorie count up.
Okay. So it goes by calorie count?
And it's grade level specific.
Okay. I know it's like probably a very boring chart, but could I get that maybe? Because that is one of the most common questions I get from parents.
I have one here tonight I can give you.
All right, cool. Because.
Putting it on the website too would probably be.
Yeah, which, well, I'll, I'll get this up there.
That would be one of the, the, you know, communicating to the parents, like, all this stuff that you're telling us is awesome, and I love hearing all of it. And just even like a monthly update in the Thursday packs and the Friday. I know it's harder than the middle school level, because, I mean, I know as a parent, I forget to check the, the updates at the middle school level, because there's no more reminders coming, like, the Thursday pack gets out, or the, you know, the, the Friday information is out. But just like getting that out to the parents would be awesome, because it just shows all this great work that you're doing that they don't know about.
Okay. I'll definitely do that. We'll put that up on my turn.
I had a few questions too.
Sure.
Back to the growing stuff in the classroom. Were you talking about growing stuff for use in, in cafeterias?
We can, we can do that.
Is it, I mean, I don't know how big these things are.
It'd get locked in.
Is it enough to make a dent in what you eat?
It's not necessarily that it would make you dent. You're not going to subsidize buying produce. But the idea is to get the kids excited about it, and then that mix will go into a toss salad, so that they would be able to see what they grew and eat it. Because one of the things that's very specific that we do, in order for me to get credit for selling a leafy vegetable or a green, dark green vegetable, I can't serve iceberg lettuce. It doesn't have enough nutritional value in it. So to me, it doesn't benefit me to serve. A, it's got no flavor. It has no nutrition. So that's why whenever we make anything, we use romaine lettuce, because romaine is a credible portion for us. It counts as a green leafy vegetable. So when we do a toss salad, we use romaine. So if we were growing our own, we would do a toss salad, and we would take these other lettuces that they would do, incorporate that into our romaine. Then it would still be a credible portion for us.
Okay. And, um, I guess it was late last year, I think, we increased prices for
Yes.
all cafeteria stuff. And I'm just wondering what kind of difference that's made, if any, on sales.
So far, it's making a positive impact. You know, we, we budgeted, uh, you know, we have a very strict budget. We really started drilling down everything on that, making it very granular to even adult a la carte meals. We started really tracking all that. So we have a large spreadsheet that we're putting all this in, and we're just really keeping an eye on it. And it's definitely, we're on budget so far for the first month as of now. So.
But I mean, are you selling more or less than before the prices went up?
Uh, I think we're, well, I shouldn't say I think. I know we're doing a little bit better than what we were last year. Again, we're really trying to increase our participation by changing things.
Yep.
Offering more choices for the kids. So that is making an impact, and definitely the, you know, the meals are getting.
That was purchased. That was my next question. What, what changes have, have we seen to the menu as a result of the prices going up?
Uh, I, usually in past experiences, I believe we usually see a decrease in meals participation. But this year, our, our participation has grown a little bit this year, because again, we're trying to be aggressive as we can as to offer new choices and different things for the students.
That's more what I'm talking about. Like, is it giving you money to try new things and so?
Um, not as of yet, but it's, you know, we're only one month in for us. But as we track it, we're hoping to be able to have some money so that we can start purchasing growing labs and a few other things. Some of the new pieces of equipment that we can use, a little bit here and there to.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks. It's good to hear all that.
And that brings us to superintendent's report to the committee with enrollment.
Enrollments are in your packet. Most significant change from last month. Obviously, we are looking very closely at these and involving numbers forward as we begin our budget conversations in terms of class sizes and so forth. Big, uh, point of conversation when you're building a new budget, right? Do we need teachers? Do we not? And we saw, we appear to be fairly stagnant, and that's a positive term. In other words, we're not seeing any declines, significant decline in our end. So the most part, even projecting our numbers forward, we're not anticipating any class size changes at all in terms of staffing. So I think we're going to hold steady. So I think, uh, we're going to hold steady as we build our FY twenty budget in terms of classes, class size and obviously then the teachers in those classes. I, I will say that a lot of our conversation has been around the needs of students in the preschool level. So we're focusing on those conversations as well.
So is trying around four thirty, is that, is that a chance, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Five percent of kids at their lunch.
That's right.
Yeah.
High percentage. That's about as high percentage we've had in a while.
Percentage to you?
It is. It is. I remember at times it was as low as twenty.
Okay.
Now you gotta beat it. Somebody's gotta beat it.
We're having a contest. We have the greatest percentage.
Pizza dipper. Also in the packet is the expenditure report. It's early on in the expending of a new fiscal year. Uh, we need a vote to approve until audited. In fact, our auditors were doing last week and we moved them forward a little bit. I would say that our special ed is a little bit more favorable this year in terms of what's in our circuit breaker balance because we had a little bit of an upside, an uptick with the circuit breaker increased seventy-two percent, which was nice. And according to today's conversation, it looks like we're tracking that way, uh, for FY twenty as well. So that's good news. So we just need a vote to approve until audited.
Small move to approve the fiscal year nineteen monthly general fund expenditure, expenditure report as of September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, until audited.
That's my second.
Any discussion? Is all in favor? Do you animus?
And the capital plan conversation, it is timely. Um, we do know that our financial advisory in South Row has been looking forward to our capital plan presentation. Subcommittee met, um, I want to say at the beginning of September. Looked at this in draft form. Since then, we've made minor tweaks. Um, Brian Fantoni is here this evening and he's been patiently waiting over there on his first, uh, presentation to the school committee.
Yes.
Um, we did agree that I'd do a little intro to this plan. Uh, that is to say what the color coding is about. We added that to our capital plan this year based on the work that we have done, uh, at the Woodward project moving forward and the great conversation and collaboration we've had with the town. So we wanted to identify purposely that those items that are in orange are kinds of, uh, projects that we hope we're going to be able to time, um, such that when the town is doing some paving or, um, you know, some construction work, they're right next door, similar to the Deerfoot Pack that we're going to talk about a little bit, um, later on in this presentation. We've had some conversations with Karen and with Mark Purple and we all agree that that would be a, a perfect marriage of when they're doing the work, um, our work gets done. And so that worked really well for Woodward because we piggybacked on Karen Galligan's pricing for, for asphalt for the Main Street project and then some of the Woodward work. So that's a conversation I think we want to have with, uh, financial advisory, just to let them know that we're mindful of the importance of working with the town. And while some things might be in, you know, FY twenty-two, if they're in our backyard and they're patching, well, we'll want to be involved in that conversation. So to let them know we're here, these are projects. Please reach out to us as well as we will reach out to them. The green is, uh, the rec department's, uh, conversations about warrant articles to improve the fields. So again, just noting that it's not just the school, it's collaboration of, of other town boards as well. The blue are projects that potentially could be warrant articles moving forwards, which is a big concern of financial advisory. What are you looking at that's big? Uh, big projects over the next ten years. And so Brian is doing a great job with a consultant trying to, um, get some updated prices. We've been carrying these same prices forward for a number of years. They have to go up. They very rarely go down. So we're trying to get some, you know, more current pricing. I will share with you an interesting conversation that took place, um, apparently either with planning board or with the Board of Selectmen, uh, which Mark Purple shared with me yesterday, which might have some impact on our capital plan. And that is, they too are looking at long range planning and they too are having conversations about what might happen ten years from now. And so some of that suggests that the projects that we have identified for five years from now or four years from now, uh, we may want not to do them or put them on hold. Uh, one such conversation that's taking place is, um, the debt rolls off of the Woodward School in FY twenty-four. It is in close proximity to the public facility safety building and there is some conversation about turning Woodward into a municipal building. And should we look at Finn again in terms of a complete overhaul? Because we know that Finn, if we touch it, has some significant upgrades that need to be made. That was a new conversation for us. Um, we did suggest that they really need to have us involved in that conversation at the infancy, but that to project out ten years, um, you know, you have a, sometimes a challenging, um, a challenge just projecting kindergarten out two years. So, you know, to suggest that we're in a position to talk about whether we need one school or, or, you know, a merging of a K eight or a, a K five is really a very long range conversation that needs a lot of in-depth research and, and dialogue. The closest we've ever come to that kind of analysis is sort of every six years, we dust off and change and update the numbers in terms of, um, years discussion. So, um, I just share that because it, it just sort of dropped into my office yesterday.
Who, who was discussing this?
Mark Purple, town manager.
If the advisory-
With one of the boards in town. I'm not sure just if it was, um, planning board or was, um, uh, financial advisory. But he did want me to know that that came up in a long range planning conversation. And so we don't want to be sort of taken aback by not knowing that this is something that they might be talking about.
So I'm curious, talk about the blue. You said they want to have, uh, anything big. They find big, is big like over a half or more, I don't know.
We, we sort of defined it for them. I think our big is over like a hundred and fifty in this model. So here we have, you know, a conversation about boilers at Finn. Um, that's an important conversation to have. But it's also very important for us to be mindful that these are projects that we're looking at. Because MSBA from now, sometimes, um, without much notice decides that it's going to fund something, uh, for, um, replacement that it may not have funded a couple of years ago. So perfect example. Boiler conversation, not in this district, but in another district. Um, it was stated that MSBA wasn't touching boilers, no replacements, no upgrade.
What's MSBA?
Um, Massachusetts School Business Authority, which actually partners with communities to give a significant reduction in cost in terms of, um, grant dollars. Um, the Woodward School, most of the schools are built through Massachusetts School Business Authority dollars. And if anybody's out there planning a new building, the biggest concern is how much is MSBA going to give us in reimbursement? Likewise, um, would, with, with the Woodward discussion, you basically are hands off a building as long as you're paying back the debt to MSBA. And that's why the conversation I mentioned that's taking place perhaps around Woodward School has everything to do with the debt coming offline and MSBA sort of releasing authority over any of our buildings. Cause that date has passed.
And what date is that for Woodward?
Twenty twenty-four.
Like the end, the end of that school year or?
End of the debt. Yeah, in sometime in that year. So every building, every school building that's been built and usually any significant upgrade to a building has involved, hopefully, some MSBA reimbursement funds. So as we look at these big projects, um, what they fund and what they choose to fund in any given year changes. So a good example, much like Finn, we had a boiler in a school. We're, we were out of duct tape. There's absolutely no, no loose screw anywhere that we could put in, that fit into this boiler. Um, it hadn't been produced for years. Um, we, we came to learn or know that MSBA was funding boilers now, which they hadn't done in the past. Uh, but it had to be within sort of a date window. So if it had been installed six months before, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar warrant article may have been eligible for some reimbursement. So I mention that because we know we've got some sizable projects. So always be mindful and watchful over what MSBA is going to fund. Cause they reauthorize money, reimbursement money at their discretion. So we know we have some big projects. So if they were to all of a sudden say, we're going to give you ninety percent or eighty-five percent reimbursement on boilers and it was, you know, it fit into their window and their criteria, we might want to pull that project in. Um, so we're getting some new prices, but you know, if those kinds of conversations are taking place, whether they're either just, you know, sort of a, a flash in the pan or there's great, uh, focused dialogue around those kinds of things happening, you know, we're looking at some sizable, sizable projects in some of our schools that are five or six years out. Do we want to do that? Or do we want to be, you know, appropriate wait time and wait to see where these conversations go? I think they're very much in the infancy, but it's important to know that those are out there in case you hear they're gonna, you know, we're gonna turn over Woodward in twenty twenty-four.
So how would they have the authority to, how would the town have the authority to turn over Woodward?
Well, there would be lots of conversations around that.
Yeah.
But they're basically public, you know, they're school buildings, but the town does have some, um-
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction and ownership around the use of the facilities. I think it's a shared conversation. Obviously they fall into the auspices of the school committee. But it would be a, a discussion that would be at the town level and at the school level. It's a ways away.
Yeah, I would love to learn more about this offline because that, that's a little concerning to me. So I would want to keep a wary eye on what's going on.
The actual, is it the actual, not maybe owned, is it actually property owned by the town?
It's who has authority over-
Well, that's, that's different issue than as far as the property ownership. It's the town.
Um, I know you're going to the conference too, uh, this, uh, in November. They also have some workshops around this conversation and discussion. MASC oftentimes offers some that we can have an offline conversation.
Yeah.
And it, I don't want to have a chicken little appro, you know, discussion. It's just something that came to me yesterday that it was out there with one of the town boards. And as we know, oftentimes, um-
No, never happens.
Sometimes it's like the doors are going to close tomorrow in our schools and that's not it. It's just something to be mindful of that it's, you know, it's, it took place someplace. And, um, with that in mind, where it goes, you know, it's, it's too much in its infancy, but it could change our capital plan, you know, some, sometime down the road. And you mentioned keeping an eye on what MSBA is funding. How do we do that?
Through, generally we get updates through the superintendent's office.
Okay.
Um, they oftentimes, um, issue, um, commissioner updates. Um, it isn't beyond the scope of what we do to sort of check in with them. You know, they, they, um, check in with us, particularly if we have projects that are funded through them. Uh, we just did a significant renovation on another one of our schools. And so, um, we've had a lot of recent interaction with them. So they often do memorandums and, um, in this case, if there's something that we're looking at long-term, we usually check in and see what their status is on the projects.
Okay.
Also on, on this, you'll note that in FY twenty and twenty-one, we do have some security upgrades planned. Uh, we were very fortunate that because of, um, you know, good fiscal practices, particularly, um, when we were moving forward with the telecommunications systems, we seize the opportunities, um, when they present themselves, either in the revolving account, the facility's rental, or in the operational budget to pull some of these projects in. Um, again, there's security upgrades, there are kinds of things that we've been talking about at different forums and so forth. Continuing to enhance, um, school security, whether it's cameras or locks and those kind of things. So we have those budgeted in the next two years, twenty and twenty-one, in all of our schools. Um, we're hoping that we can move forward with some of these this year, depending on what our revenue is, is looking like as we progress through the year. Brian, did I finish my part?
I have a lot of mine.
I told you I had the other.
You did, you did.
So the rest is yours.
All right. So I just want to start a little bit with, um, some things that we have been doing and have completed. Um, well, we recently completed an upgrade to the telephone systems in all the buildings, um, as well as working closely with the town, specifically John Parent, uh, through the Green Communities Act. Um, we did a lot of air sealing in the buildings, which is, uh, doing things like, uh, checking to make sure that exterior doors are functioning properly, installing door sweeps, weather stripping, um, sealing around our rooftop, air handlers, that type of thing, uh, roof wall joints. Just basically finding all the drafty areas in the buildings and, and that should, that should help a lot with the efficiency of the heating and cooling.
And that was free?
And that was, yeah.
No cost to the schools.
Through the Green Communities Act. It didn't cost the town or the schools anything.
Great.
And that's something we're going to continue to look forward, uh, continue to do with the town. Uh, it looks like right now maybe every other year type of thing. You got me lost because you took half of those yesterday.
Sorry. I was just trying to help you out, Brian.
Uh, you did, you did a wonderful job. Um, also like Christine said, I am working with some consultants, um, on, on some of these larger, uh, budget items, uh, looking to roofing and boilers, um, just trying to see, um, the conditions of these systems right now, the longevity of them and, and the course of action for later down the road. Just carrying your phrase. Um, you know, like Christine said, the, a lot of our driveways are coming up and need to repair. So that's something we'll be collaborating with the towns to try to piggyback on any projects they might have. We've also been working on the maintenance plan, which will cover more every year, uh, maintenance to the buildings, it is, as far as just general upkeep, painting, carpeting and that type of thing. Um, you know, some of the items on there, actually the carpeting in this room, um, just painting of classrooms, um, purchasing and upgrading equipment that we use every day to keep the buildings, you know, looking the way they do. There were some questions on Deerfoot Road. So we're talking with Karen Galligan. We're hoping early November, depending on weather, the plan would be to redo the part of the path that comes from Deerfoot Road down to the fork where the path from Mary meets the path that continues on Trotier. So we can down from the street, down to that path, dig it up, gravel, asphalt it, um, as well as a few areas that have some root damage right now. So paving back over that, getting that surface back where it needs to be, um, as well as the path across the fields over at Mary, um, removing the asphalt from that part of the path and lowing it and seeding it so it'll be more natural to the fields surrounding it. Glycol in the heating systems in the buildings was brought up. So we are working closely with our HVAC company, William F. Lynch and Gurney Engineering, testing the systems. Right now, the chilling loops at Trotier and Woodward are the, um, main priority as we've had some leaks in those systems. So we don't have, um, adequate freeze protection in those loops. So we're working with them to add the needed glycol to the systems, to get those where they need to be, as well as coming up with a plan for the remaining systems in the schools. Um, mostly Trotier, the heating system, needs some work here. That's something we're just going to manage over the winter and we address that in the spring. Got a few much covers Christine didn't cover. Any, any questions?
Can you, can you say, repeat the Deerfoot Road, the path again? Because that's something that a few people are going to ask me about.
Right. So it's, are you familiar with the path at all?
I haven't walked it, but I've heard lots about it.
New Trotier, there's a fork, so part of- You leave Trotier, there's a fork, so part of the fork goes to Nary.
Yeah.
And the other fork goes to Deerfoot Road. Um, that's been the major concern, is the Deerfoot Road part of the path. So the path, once you actually connect, coming to Trotier is fine. So we're going to excavate from Deerfoot Road
Okay.
down to where that path meets, lay new asphalt. And then there's a couple of areas of patchwork heading towards Nary. Just, just cover those roots.
Got it.
And then again, they were going to work from the Nary side and just kind of make that more of a natural setting.
Yeah, okay, great.
I just have, this was Brian's first presentation. And he has done an amazing job in the year that he's been in the role of interim manager, um, facilities manager, especially with all the projects that we had going on this summer, with the telecommunications and the Woodward project. I think Brian is pretty much on twenty-four hour call, uh, by the OPM onsite. Uh, last week, we had an excellent tour of the sewers, Brian, I think it was. A lot of high points. Um, but, but there was a rumor that the flagpole was sinking. That is not true. Um, we've had, um, surprise visits by, uh, a lot of folks, right, Steve? Where they wanted to, um, connect into Woodward for one reason and then for another.
Yep.
Um, very high piles of rock, uh, chipping left and right. So we've had a lot of exciting visits to the Woodward project. And Brian has done an amazing job, sort of fielding all of those questions. I don't think we expected that we would have that much work, um, on our end to support their work on the other side of the fence. And, um, just has handled themself very well in terms of response and just being there to make sure that our school and our students are safe, along with, um, you know, Principal Woji. So it's been a busy year, um, with the projects that we've had. And then we had the humps and the, not the bums, but the humps installed. Um, still some more work. And, um, I think his, uh, collaboration and coordination with the staff has been phenomenal. The building principals can speak more directly to the conversations that they've had. Brian's been incredibly responsible, um, you know, taking on the custodial team is, is a challenge. And, um, you know, clearly, everyone's working well together here at Trotier. You know, building, the floors are spotless. Uh, I don't think there's been, haven't missed too much of a beat. So I've said to, I've said to Brian tonight, maybe last night, with the word interim in front, your first presentation, uh, to the school committee tonight. So I don't know if the principals want to add anything as well.
Well, I know I would a hundred percent support, uh, those sentiments by you, Superintendent Johnson. Uh, Brian jumped right in and, and took on all the projects that were pending for me. Uh, took that load off of me, and I assumed, uh, put that responsibility on him, and he delivered on every one, even over the summer. You know, when things can kind of get a little helter-skelter, uh, skeleter, he, uh, buckled down and got the job done. And we've continued to meet daily about progress, and he updates me frequently. I don't have to ask the questions, he's given me the information. And for us, I know, that isn't always the case. We have to remember to ask some of these questions, but not with Brian at the, at the control. So I have a lot of confidence in his ability moving forward to take care of all the stuff at Trotier, that's for sure.
I completely agree.
I, I agree as well.
Very supportive.
I, I'm excited that Brian had his roots at Finn.
Yeah, I'll gone for grad.
And his, his perspective in a micro sense is now blossomed to the macro sense, and looking at the district in a way that not many people can develop that perspective, because he's been essentially at every school at some point in time, and he knows the schools intimately. So I'm thrilled, and I'm so excited that, and I'm so confident that he is at the helm of this, so.
I would just speak, I would just speak to two, um, two points. The first being, uh, Brian's, uh, work with the Woodward, or with the, um, with the school safety, not school safety, we'll have a safe school. The, uh, the public safety building next to Woodward. While I'm included on every correspondence, very rarely do I have to interject. Uh, Brian's on top of that. He's, he's one that's acting as, um, um, kind of a middleman, or one representing the school, um, and the district in, in a way that I would never question. I mean, it's, I rely on him to have those answers and to organize staffing, um, when they do need to tap in power on holidays or on the weekends. So, um, thank you for that work, Brian. And then the, um, the work that was done over the summer, um, the initial thought was that we would be having our driveway project done over the summer. Um, in preparation for that, Brian organized all of the personnel and, um, cleaning projects, and maintenance projects to take place early on. Um, our school was back to, um, its original form, or if not better, sparkling, um, within a few weeks of, of the end of the school year, you know? To, so really allow teachers to come in and, and prepare for the school year.
And he started, his launch was the power outage that we had last year. It was about three or four days, so it was a good start, and he just kept going.
Trial and fire.
I was going to ask if you have any criticisms, but that's not going to go far. It's up to you, let Christine take after the presentation.
All right, she's the boss.
Yeah, he still, Brian was a former student of mine too, so it's really challenging. He started to just call me by my first name recently.
I sat in many of these chairs myself.
But Roger, one thing I could speak to that is say that every time Brian hasn't known the answer to a question, he hasn't assumed or interjected that he did, he went and found the answer. So he might not have all the answers at the immediate turn because of the systems that are involved, but he won't, he's not afraid to say, "I have no idea, and I've got to find it out." So granted, it's a backdoor criticism, but I would say that, that's, that is a positive way of handling a lot of situations that are dealt, because he doesn't know what's going to happen on any given day. Be very unusual.
And his communication skills are so strong. He won't make a decision in isolation. He comes and he, he problem solves with us, looks for solutions. So it's really a team effort, and Nary has never looked better. It, Brian was key in helping us to, uh, to hire our new custodian, as well as our second shift custodian, and really worked collaboratively with them to, uh, really do such a tremendous work at, at Nary and elsewhere as well, but thank you.
Thank you. You should come every month.
Seriously? Well, the last one, they're not even just saying this because you're here. Last one, they all send your praises and all their updates.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so everybody's a big fan.
All right, no other questions?
You're good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pass my bedtime.
Speak for some other students.
Take care, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. That brings us to the fiscal twenty budget priorities, which we need to vote on.
Right. I don't think we made any change from the last one, because I think the conversation pretty much was covered in most of them. The directions that we, uh, and kindergarten is still on there.
We didn't really vote it, we just discussed it.
Oh, discussed it.
Got it. We do have to vote this month, yep?
Yes.
So now, on moving, we accept what's presented here, um, as the, uh, twenty twenty South West School Committee budget priorities. Should we read them, or should we just say, "As, as presented?"
Oh, I bet everybody would be happy with that, if there's anything.
Yeah, I think that's just fine.
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Budget development. Budget development.
Oh, we had that conversation. I sort of launched into that when we were talking about kindergarten and some of the other initiatives. It's where we are, and hopefully, definitely December, we'll have a preliminary, if not maybe go forward.
Okay. Budget calendar, then?
Uh, no, no changes from last month. I think we're still sort of tracking this dual, dual course of towns, towns' dates versus our dates. But I think if we get close to December, we ought to be fine with our dates and their dates.
Yeah.
Because I think it's still evolving.
Okay.
We will have another budget subcommittee meeting prior to the presentation on the preliminary. So where, whenever we start getting close to, to those numbers, we'll have a budget subcommittee.
Okay. Then, uh, educational policy, not at this time, apparently. Policy development, we have first readings on three policies in the packet. So normally what we do here is first reading, just read if you have any suggested changes, let, uh...
So the, uh, policy subcommittee meeting is, um, October twenty-ninth, so... Any feedback? We can discuss about, uh, the subcommittee meeting.
Very good. Uh, personnel items.
Personnel reports in the packet.
Mrs. Burgess is retiring.
Yeah.
She is.
That was the one that jumped out at me.
Yeah, me too.
All right, and communications. A few things in the packet.
Hmm, we did, I did include the preschool program brochure. I don't think the committee's actually seen the brochure before. We did make some, um, upgrades this year, updates this year. Uh, we've been, um, streamlined the tuition process in added some section.
Programming itself to account for what the parents really wanted in terms of programming. So we did away with some of the piecemeal programming and kind of, kind of solidified more four- and five-day programming. And then we did some studies on area, um, districts for tuition.
Positive changes too in that, because I do see an uptick in the preschool revolving funds.
Interesting, so there's no more three-day program?
Um, for typical students, no.
Right, for general ed students, yeah, that's, that's good.
And action on minutes from September twelfth.
Revised minutes, um, Paul, you sent some suggestions for edits, uh, were handed out. So they should be underneath, you know, vanilla, vanilla envelope?
Nothing terribly exciting, name spellings or something like that?
We looked at that three times, and we said, "What, what? Just, Paul doesn't want Randall in there?" Didn't even dawn on us it was a spelling.
If you're going to name something after guys, you probably spell it wrong.
Absolutely. It was a Charlotte, what does Paul mean? He doesn't want Randall in there, he wants Mr. James? It took us a while to figure out. I said, "Fine, just call Paul, it's spelled wrong." Oh.
All right, do we have a motion on minutes?
A motion that we approve the minutes from the Wednesday, September twelfth, twenty eighteen, South West School Committee open meeting.
As amended?
As amended.
Very good. Second by Roger, any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Bills and payrolls are right here. And agenda items for next month?
Definitely budget conversations. Uh, that's, we sort of planned our school improvement plans, not only because the, um, remaining plans are mostly updates, and you want to have time to update them with the year, but I think November and December are going to be budget discussion months.
Do we, so the budget, because I'm new to all this, so when we have our budget discussion, you know, I'm not on the budget subcommittee. So is that where I'm going to learn everything I need to know? Should I go to a budget subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Even though you're, you're not, um, an identified liaison, they're open to everyone. And it's really a, a great opportunity to have some more granular conversation and really gain an appreciation for how the budget is, is sort of moves forward. So I think that would be awesome.
Is it scheduled yet? The next, is the next budget subcommittee?
It hasn't been scheduled yet. It'll be somewhere between November first and Thanksgiving.
Okay.
If you have any other ideas for agenda items, just let me know.
Greg, M. Cass?
M. Cass, update on results.
All right, I think that brings us to audience sharing once again.
Dave, hi.
I guess there being none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just, there is a combined meeting, October twenty-second, I think? Is that what we finally decided?
I think that's what it was, that Monday.
The Monday?
Yes, Monday.
We'll send a reminder out to everybody, because it's definitely better.
Okay.
And we definitely already have forms if everyone arrives.
Good. Want you to adjourn, anyone?
I'm going to adjourn.
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor? There you go.